Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing on the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, joint with small business. At this time, we ask that you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. We thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to sanitation commission committee members and small business committee member, council member for being here. Thank you, DSNY Commissioner Jessica Tisch, Deputy Commissioner Greg Anderson, Deputy Commissioner Robert Olin, no? Okay, sorry about that. And waste advocates and workers for joining us today. Welcome to the first sanitation committee hearing of 2023, held jointly with the Committee on Small Business. Today, we will be focusing on how the administration is working to prepare New York City businesses for the implementation of commercial waste zones. New York City often fails to do adequate education, awareness, and outreach when rolling out major changes, and as chair, my oversight focus this year will be on timely and effective rollout of the CWZ plan. The success of this long-fought-for reform of the private waste sector is critical for the environment, labor rights, and safety across our city. In 2014, advocates, former council member, and now Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso, also former sanitation chair, and the de Blasio administration began a complete overhaul of the massive commercial waste industry. As a refresher on the private waste sector and why this is so important, more than 3 million tons of commercial waste is generated every year by 100,000 New York City office buildings, retailers, restaurants, manufacturers, and other commercial establishments. About 90 different private carters truck commercial waste across the boroughs, racking up diesel truck miles, and bring waste to facilities across the city, primarily in North Brooklyn, Southeast Queens, and the South Bronx. The commercial waste sector employs more or less about 2,600 workers. Some workers spend eight-hour shifts in loaders and excavators, moving waste around inside transfer facilities. Some spend their days standing at a conveyor belt, picking out non-recyclable material. Some work long, unpredictable nights where they cross multiple boroughs, jumping in and out of trucks repeatedly to pick up trash, no matter the weather, no matter the conditions they find at each client. These workers are exposed to all sites, all types of smells, lots of industrial elements on their shifts, and in the past, their efforts to collectively bargain for their safety and improved working conditions have been met with fake unions and obstructions. The CWZ is meant to increase their safety and their organizing power. The commercial waste zones reform is also pro-small business. In the past, it was reported that 61% of New York City's small businesses do not have a contract with their waste hauler. Most companies have very little knowledge of how much waste they produce. 90% of small businesses pay a flat rate for garbage collection regardless of how much waste they create, and this leaves small businesses with almost no leverage for negotiating contracts, switching haulers, or getting more services such as organics recycling. Small businesses also can face disproportionately higher price rates than larger ones, and are often subject to unpredictable price hikes. Commercial waste zones will improve transparency and accountability for our communities, who are tired of seeing dirty streets. When haulers leave waste strewn across sidewalks and streets, there is no accountability for picking it up, because so many carters come through each neighborhood. Less carters per street will increase accountability. This will allow community boards, elected officials, and bids to hold carters accountable when these unfortunate moments happen. The CWZ is important for our sustainability and environmental justice goals. Aging, commercial waste trucks represent a major source of greenhouse gas emissions in our city. Roughly 1,100 commercial diesel-powered trucks crisscross the boroughs every single night. They queue near waste transfer facilities in predominantly black and brown neighborhoods, spewing toxic fumes in these concentrated areas. When implemented, commercial waste zones is expected, or anticipated, to cut truck-vehicle miles by 50% and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by around 40% to 60%. The CWZ reform is also about pedestrian safety. The hypercompetitive nature of the current commercial waste system means workers are compromising traffic safety protocols during night collections in order to meet their collection targets on time. This has resulted in pedestrian fatalities and severe injuries, including pedestrians being dragged by trucks. This system has led to 56 fatalities involving trade-waste truck accidents since 2010. I share these environmental worker and pedestrian stories as a reminder of the immense amount of advocacy, work, and personal investment many individuals, families, and organizations put into this once-in-a-generation transformational reform. The Transform Don't Trash Coalition, made up of union workers, environmental justice leaders, environmental advocates, Family First Safer Streets, along with the Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso, former DSNY Commissioner Catherine Garcia, and our former mayor, they all worked together to get Local Law 199 over the finish line, and we remain committed to ensuring its success. We can all recognize, and I certainly appreciate, that such a massive reform involving many moving parts takes time and will inevitably run into bumps. We all recognize that the pandemic has forever changed our city, including the volume and pattern of where waste is generated in New York. However, I don't agree that we only have one chance to get this right. We will continue working on it until it works, because going backwards is not an option, and I am ready, willing, and able to do anything I can do in this role to support. Today, we're also hearing two bills and a resolution. Intro 933 would create a commercial waste zones working group for ensuring key stakeholders are engaged in ongoing conversations about the CWZ implementation. Intro 493 would require DSNY to establish a plan for accepting commercial solid waste at city-owned marine transfer stations. This is a long-overdue environmental justice and waste equity project. The 2006 Solid Waste Management Plan called for DSNY to study the feasibility of utilizing the city's marine transfer stations to collect commercial waste. The CWZ RFP also invited waste companies to express interest in utilizing MTSs in their future waste management operations. We're also hearing Resolution 167, calling upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Bigger Better Bottle Bill. Over its 40-plus-year history, New York's Bottle Bill has proven to be a highly effective program to reduce litter and increase recycling rates, not to mention sustaining an entirely underappreciated set of environmental workers known as canners. It's time to modernize the program by expanding the types and number of beverage containers covered, and by increasing the deposit amount. A modernized, high-performing bottle bill would also save us money by decreasing the cost of sending aluminum, plastic, and glass beverage containers to landfills and incinerators. This is a critical update that will move us closer toward our zero-waste goals, and I want to thank the cosponsors so far for their support. As always, I want to thank Anel Mohammed, Ricky, Andrew, the tech team, and all the staff today working behind the scenes. I want to acknowledge councilmember Sandra Ung, councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers, councilmember Chi Ose. And now, I will turn it over to my co-chair for this hearing, councilmember Julie Menon, Chair of the Small Business Services Committee, for her opening statement.
Thank you so much. Good morning. I'm Councilmember Julie Menon, Chair of the Committee on Small Business. Thank you for joining today's joint hearing with the Committee on Sanitation, as well as small business. I, first of all, want to begin by thanking my co-chair, Councilmember Sandy Nurse, Chair of the Sanitation Committee, for her incredible work putting together today's hearing, and I also want to thank all of our colleagues who have joined us today. Commercial waste zones have been a long time coming. After testimony from a 2015 sanitation committee hearing, as well as subsequent studies by the Department of Sanitation, as well as the Business Integrity Commission, which I previously served as a commissioner on, revealed the dangerous state of the private carter industry, the necessity of revisiting what waste collection looks like in New York City became abundantly clear. Under the current method of waste collection, roughly 90 different private carters service over 100,000 of the city's commercial businesses, resulting, quite frankly, in unsafe routes that dramatically and detrimentally affect communities and workers. This method of collection also results in minimal price transparency for businesses, and small businesses are often inequitably burdened, paying more than their larger counterparts that produce more waste. In response to these concerns, the council passed Local Law 199 in 2019, creating a commercial waste zone program. Under this law, the Department of Sanitation has identified 20 waste zones that will each be served by up to three selected carriers. The Department of Sanitation must implement these commercial waste zones in a manner that is environmentally efficient, that is safe for communities, that is safe for private carter workers, and we must all work together to ensure that businesses do not suffer a reduction in service quality or increased pricing, as has been the concern shared by DSNY, as well as small business owners. Intro 493 and Intro 933, presented today by Councilmember Nurse, are also key for ensuring that the implementation of commercial waste zones is closely monitored in order to quickly address issues and adapt this important program accordingly. I look forward to hearing testimony today from the Department of Sanitation with updates on the commercial waste zones and how they plan to help repair carters and businesses for its implementation. I similarly look forward to hearing from small businesses, from advocates on this topic as well, and responses to the legislation that is being proposed today. I want to thank Ricky Chawla, I want to thank Christopher Sartori and Rebecca Barilla from Central Staff for their work in putting together today's hearing, as well as my own Chief of Staff Jonathan Shutt and my Legislative Director Brandon Jordan for their assistance. I now turn it back over to Councilmember Nurse. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Committee Counsel for the oath.
Thank you, Chair. Chris Sartori, Committee Counsel. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before these committees, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm also excited that we have a mini-council member here this morning. I think it's a first for me. So, we're gonna, we, the topics we're gonna cover, we'll first talk about CWZ implementation, get an update on that, we'll talk about the budget needs, we'll talk about small business engagement and outreach plans, and then commercial organics law, but love to hear your opening statement.
Good morning, Chair Nurse, and members of the City Council Committees on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management and Small Businesses. My name is Jessica Tisch, and I'm Commissioner of the New York City Department of Sanitation. I am joined today by Javier Lohan, our newly-appointed first deputy commissioner, and Gregory Anderson, Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Strategic Initiatives. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on DSNY's commercial waste zones program. In 2019, after years of advocacy and to great fanfare, New York City enacted a sweeping reform of the commercial waste industry, the patchwork of private waste haulers who pick up refuse, recycling, and compostable material from every single one of the city's businesses. This reform enacted in Local Law 199 of 2019, also called Local Law 199, and referred to as commercial waste zones, introduces a new regulatory framework for this industry. In this approach, there will be no more than three haulers serving each of 20 zones across the city, down from dozens of haulers in some neighborhoods today. This program will also deliver meaningful upgrades in safety and worker protection, emission standards, and public reporting that will yield real tangible improvements for neighborhoods across New York City. Commercial waste zones means fewer trucks, more safety, cleaner air. I am committed to implementing this program, and more importantly, to doing it right. The department has spent eight years working with stakeholders, carters, consultants, advocates, and the city council, as you described, to create the framework for this program. I have had the privilege of coming into this process at the implementation phase. It is my honor and my responsibility to push this over the finish line. Today, we have made major steps forward in the request for proposals process to select which carters will service which zones. However, this is not something that we can implement overnight or with the flick of a switch. The system we are putting in place should be with New York City for decades to come. In my opinion, we have one chance to do this, and it's worth taking the time to ensure that we get it done right. Businesses in New York City generate 20 million pounds of waste a day, seven days a week. If you get that wrong, that's called a public health crisis. My team and I, together, have decades of experience implementing some of the most complex and impactful new programs in the realms of cleanliness, service delivery, public health, policing, and technology that this city has seen. Together, we have managed billions of dollars' worth of complex services contracts. We have the tools to execute on commercial waste zones, and we will. Local Law 199 began based on years of advocacy from a coalition of labor, environment, and safety advocates, calling for reform of the dangerous and dirty commercial waste sector. These advocates have paved the way for this program for over a decade, first pushing the de Blasio administration to study the industry in 2015, and later to announce a full-fledged plan for commercial waste zones in 2018. It's only because of their work that we can have this conversation today. The commercial waste zones program aims to bring order to a chaotic system, one where hundreds of private carting trucks crisscross neighborhoods across New York City every night. Today, one truck may service a shop in the Bronx, a restaurant in Queens, and a grocery store in Brooklyn, driving over 100 miles over the course of as many as 12 hours, creating unnecessary truck traffic, safety hazards, and pollution. And on one commercial corridor, more than a dozen different trucks may drive up and down the block on a given night. The commercial waste zones approach brings order and accountability to commercial waste. By allowing up to three carters to service each of the 20 zones, the program will reduce the overall truck traffic associated with commercial waste collected, collection by 50%. In dense commercial districts and around waste transfer stations, these reductions will be even more pronounced. Reductions in truck traffic will also yield meaningful improvements in public and worker safety, shorter routes mean less driver fatigue and fewer incentives to cut corners, and will reduce greenhouse gas and air pollution emissions. Introducing this new regulatory approach also allows the city to achieve meaningful improvements in several other areas. New worker training and safety requirements will ensure that private sanitation workers are properly equipped for the dangerous job that they carry out each night. The new system will also nearly double the commercial diversion rate for recyclables and organic waste by requiring that carters actually provide these services and offer their customers incentives to recycle. And it will improve transparency and quality of service for the more than 100,000 businesses, large and small, that rely on commercial waste collection services. This program will improve quality of life in city neighborhoods through new accountability and reporting tools that will allow DSNY to hold bad actors accountable. For the first time, we will have a clear picture of how the system is operating and which carters serve which customers, as well as real-time location data on commercial trucks. This is a game changer for enforcement and something that has proven instrumental for internal operations management within DSNY. Now, New York City is not the first city to take this approach. Franchise collection is common in smaller cities and towns across the United States, mostly in places where dumpster collection is the norm. Los Angeles implemented a similar zone system in 2017, creating 11 zones, each with just one carter authorized to service commercial and multifamily customers in that zone. The initial implementation of the Los Angeles program was nothing short of a disaster. Prices more than doubled for some customers, who submitted more than 6,000 service complaints in just one month in December 2017, and the program manager called it "Six Months of Hell." The city council and sanitation department faced lawsuits and calls to scrap the program entirely. Los Angeles spent the next two years renegotiating contracts, changing requirements, and working with both customers and carters to stabilize that system. While that program now works more smoothly, we certainly do not want to repeat these mistakes in New York City. DSNY learned a few important lessons from Los Angeles. First, we must be keenly aware that massive downstream price increases for customers will be the death knell for commercial waste reform. Los Angeles created ambitious targets that it expected carters to meet very quickly, rather than phase in over time. They did not put in place thoughtful contracts at the outset of the program. Carters took advantage of a new list of fees to drive up customer bills. Los Angeles also looked at the commercial waste sector as a new source of city revenues, charging a franchise fee of 10% of revenues. As I will describe, we have taken several steps to reprioritize low prices in our approach. Second, the Los Angeles program eliminated any element of choice for businesses by creating monopolistic exclusive zones. DSNY has designed a non-exclusive model with multiple carters authorized to service customers in each zone. This creates competition amongst carters in each zone and gives customers the ability to pick the carter that provides the price and the service that works best for them. Third, Los Angeles implemented the entire program at once, transitioning every customer overnight. Carters did not have a clear picture of which customers they were expected to service, and some carters went weeks without trash pickup. Excuse me, some customers went weeks without trash pickup. DSNY plans to implement commercial waste zones in a phased rollout, starting with just one pilot zone, to have time to conduct education of customers and ensure that they have time to select a new carter that works for them. Since the enactment of Local Law 199, DSNY has worked to implement the commercial waste zones program. The department moved quickly to begin rulemaking and start work on an RFP. However, the COVID pandemic and associated stay-at-home orders decimated the commercial waste sector, reducing waste volumes and revenues by 50% to 70%. At that time, DSNY paused the implementation of this program to allow the industry to stabilize and begin to recover. In recognition of the ongoing impact of the pandemic on the city's economy, DSNY decided to take a phased approach to the RFP required by Local Law 199, to select carters to provide service in each zone. In November 2020, exactly one year after the law's enactment, the department issued the first part of the RFP to collect information from potential awardees on their existing operations and their compliance history. In June of 2021, DSNY announced that 50 carters had submitted response proposals for Part One of the RFP. In November of 2021, the department issued the second part of the RFP to collect more detailed pricing and technical proposals, along with updated financial and compliance data. To meet the laundry list of requirements in Local Law 199, this RFP was incredibly detailed. Carters were expected to submit plans related to customer service, zero waste, health and safety, emergency operations, waste management, air pollution reduction, subcontracting, and outreach, along with detailed financial, business, and compliance information, covering several years of operations. This is important and valuable information. However, it means hundreds or thousands of pages of submissions from each carter, including information that has to be validated against previous submissions, publicly available data, and other sources. Looking at the experience from Los Angeles and other systems, we know that commercial waste regulations face two existential threats that must be managed. First is massive downstream increases in cost to businesses, and the second is litigation that stalls implementation. When I started as sanitation commissioner last April, I immediately took a deep dive into commercial waste zone program and the RFP with these threats in mind. I cannot guarantee that those challenges will not affect the implementation of this program. What I can guarantee is that I am doing everything in my power to mitigate any challenges to and arising from the implementation of this program that could threaten decades' worth of advocacy. On price, we dug into previous analysis on new costs associated with increased regulation. We also made an adjustment to the RFP evaluation criteria to give price the highest-scoring weight, sending a clear message to potential proposers that we are serious about keeping prices under control. And we realigned incentives for recycling and organics with a real-world understanding of the costs of providing those services. While I cannot guarantee that these changes will allow us to entirely avoid price increases, I am confident that we took reasonable steps to work toward that goal without sacrificing our commitments to safety and worker protections. On potential litigation, we have emphasized creating a fair and competitive process that follows the letter of the city's procurement rules and procedures. Following an initial review of the RFP responses, we issued a request for best and final offers, a best practice in procurements, to ensure that you are getting the highest-quality service for the best price. This allowed proposers to have another chance to refine their proposals, to ensure that they submit the full set of documents required and meet the requirements of Local Law 199. This also ensures that we have as many proposers as possible move into the evaluation phase, increasing competition to keep prices low. Since the due date for the BAFO on November 10, 2022, we have conducted a careful, painstaking review of the submissions, which number in the dozens and can exceed 1,000 pages each. DSNY completed its review of the proposals for completeness and did not eliminate any proposers for technical errors or fixable flaws. The Evaluation Committee for the RFP has begun reviewing the proposals, a substantial milestone in this important procurement process. Going forward, there are several steps: evaluation and scoring of the proposals by the committee, negotiating contracts with selected awardees, and approval of the contracts by oversights and the controller. Each of these steps, for just one contract, typically takes months, not weeks. And here, we are talking about six, up to 65 different contracts. When complete, this will represent the single biggest change to the city's waste management efforts since the opening of the marine transfer stations decades ago. Just one contract for waste export from the marine transfer stations, from RFP to award, took a full two years and seven months. When DSNY released Part Two of the RFP at the end of the last administration in November 2021, it indicated that implementation was expected to begin in early 2023. Given the complexity of the RFP and the amount of care and attention required to complete this process, this timeline was unrealistic. I am committing to you today to give you frank, realistic expectations of timeline and process going forward. Based on where we stand now, we expect that the first pilot zone will be implemented in the second half of 2024. I reserve the right to adjust that timeline, but I assure you that I will provide regular updates as the procurement rules permit. Now, I will overview our implementation efforts. Within the Bureau of Commercial Waste, staffing has increased from 13 to 17 people since I started last April, and we have another three positions actively posted. This will bring us to a total of 20 civilian staff dedicated to this program. We added 10 additional sanitation police officers as part of our most recent academy class that graduated earlier this month, and those officers will be dedicated to commercial waste enforcement as soon as the program begins implementation. This means staffing dedicated to commercial waste zones has more than doubled. We have also brought on a new executive director, Frank Marshall, who has decades of experience in program management. He's here in the room today. Frank, wave please. But he is not able to join us at the table today, given his role in evaluating the proposals. As we move forward, we will continue to assess staffing needs for implementation and ongoing program management, and work with OMB to meet those needs. But this isn't about the work of just one bureau. We are taking a department-wide approach to this program. We have built a program management office to bring executive-level leadership and experienced project management to this complex, agency-wide program. This team has put in place new systems and procedures to keep these programs on track, aligned with our strategic priorities, and on budget. We are bringing talented IT resources to design the data management systems that will form the backbone of our contract management and enforcement. We are working to fix a system that, while built with good intentions, was not initially fit for purpose. This team is creating a system that will be easy for carters to use, and this is the first time that we will have the opportunity to collect this data, and we need to do it right. Most importantly, we have created a centralized outreach team led by an experienced Assistant Commissioner for Outreach to create and implement strategies for outreach around agency priorities, including set-out times, organics, and of course, commercial waste. Ahead of the implementation- Ahead of the implementation of this program, we will engage businesses across the city through a strategic zone-by-zone approach. We aim to reach over 100,000 business owners through in-person canvassing, phone calls, and direct mail to educate and assist customers during the zoning transition period. We are also securing a vendor to conduct the door-to-door canvassing in each of the new zones. That vendor will be in place long before implementation starts next year. The outreach associates' canvassing efforts will include all types of commercial establishments, including office buildings, retail, restaurants, industrial uses, hotels, and hospitals, among so many others. In addition to the direct outreach to business owners, we will engage community partners, including bids, trade associations, and civic associations, as well as our partners in government through training, presentations, email blasts, and more to amplify our multi-pronged awareness campaign. I have already been in touch with SBS Commissioner Kim on this matter. Our outreach strategy will emphasize language access and providing simple, clear information to businesses in the language and the format that works best for them in accordance with Local Law 30. As I mentioned, we expect to begin implementation with one pilot zone in the second or third quarter of 2024. Outreach will begin in the months preceding implementation and will continue through the full four-month transition period. Additional phases of implementation will follow the first pilot zone, and we expect the full implementation to take about two years. Finally, I will briefly address the two bills on the agenda for today's hearing. Intro 493 would require the department to establish a plan for accepting commercial solid waste at city-owned marine transfer stations and to report annually on the implementation of that plan. The city's 2006 Solid Waste Management Plan anticipated that the city marine transfer stations, or MTSs, would potentially be used for commercial waste where surplus capacity exists. Only two transfer stations have additional available capacity today, the East 91st Street and Southwest Brooklyn MTSs. These, there are costs that come with this approach, both for DSNY and for commercial Carter's. To accept commercial waste, we would have to add additional city and vendor staff to process waste on a third shift overnight. In addition, our export contracts with substantial built-in redundancy and an emphasis on rail and barge export are not cheap. We have to acknowledge that our facilities may not be competitive with private transfer stations in New York City and the larger metro area. Some Carter's also operate their own transfer stations, creating vertical integration that can reduce the cost of providing service for businesses. That said, we have included the MTSs as part of the Commercial Waste Zones RFP. We asked every proposer to indicate if they are interested in using these facilities for waste disposal. As we evaluate the proposals, we will have a better sense of demand for commercial waste disposal at the MTSs. We think that working through the RFP process is the right approach to this issue going forward. Intro 933 would require DSNY to create a working group that would convene no later than two months following the issuance of awards to selected Carter's. The working group would be comprised of no more than 20 members, including the sanitation commissioner, the chair of the Business Integrity Commission, the chair of the City Council Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, at least eight designated Carter's, and at least eight appointees by the city council. Now, stakeholder engagement has been a fundamental part of the development of this program to date. In developing the implementation plan, DSNY met with more than 100 different stakeholders representing business groups, labor, transportation, safety advocates, environmental advocates, and industry representatives, many of whom are in this room today. The legislation, environmental review, and rulemakings have each been public participatory processes that together have engaged hundreds of stakeholders and members of the public. During the RFP phase, our engagement and communications with stakeholders has been limited by rules and best practices for city procurements. All communications must be equal and fair to ensure no preferential treatment. As soon as the procurement concludes, we expect to resume regular engagement with appropriate stakeholders ahead of the implementation of this program. However, I cannot support this bill in its current form. The inclusion of designated Carter's in the working group would present legitimate concerns about favoritism and access that could threaten the implementation of the program. The Carter's on the working group would have both perceived and actual preferential access to members of the department and discussions about the implementation of the program and put it in legal jeopardy. At DSNY, we will, sorry, at DSNY, as DSNY will be both the contract manager and the regulator under this program, the department should determine the best way to engage with vendors to avoid any favoritism and create a fair program for all vendors. In conclusion, I want to ensure the council, once again, that we are fully committed to implementing commercial waste zones, and we are committed to getting it right. We will take the time and dedicate the resources needed to achieve the program goals and create a cleaner, safer, more sustainable commercial waste collection system. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and my colleagues and I are now happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Always appreciate your very open testimony. Want to acknowledge Councilmember Botcher, who introduced himself with a little music earlier. So, sorry. We're just gonna get a little status update on commercial waste zone implementation, and you know, you can share what you're legally allowed to share. I know there are concerns with the process still ongoing. So, in terms of today, can you tell us where DSNY is in the CWZ process review, proposal review process? Specifically, if you can share how many Carter's have responded to the RFP, how many Carter's responded to the best and final offer, and at this time, how many Carter's has the administration moved forward with?
Thirty-four Carter's responded to Part Two of the RFP. All of those Carter's responded to the best and final offer, and at this time, we haven't selected any Carter's. And the reason we haven't selected any Carter's is the committee has to meet and review all of the proposals before they make their selections. That process is what's going on right now. There's a committee of six members that is full-time reviewing each of those proposals with the goals of making the awards.
And have there been enough applicants to fulfill the three Carter's per zone and five Carter's for container pickup?
Yes.
Okay, that's great news. You sort of hint, you kind of talked about the timeline. Is there any, can you reconfirm your timeline for announcing awardees?
So, there's multiple phases to this, and I'll just like go, go through each one of them. Right now, the vendor selection committee, which is a team of six people, is reviewing all of the RFPs with the goal or the purpose of selecting vendors for each zone. After that, once the vendors are selected based on the scoring, we will begin a process where we negotiate those contracts. It's up to 65 contracts. It may be fewer number of contracts if we have Carter's operating in multiple zones, but there's a lot of contracts. So, selection, negotiations, and then the process of like going through the various oversights and the controller to get the contracts registered. As I mentioned, for a single contract, each of those steps takes months, not weeks. And this is up to 65 contracts. And so, given everything I know now, my realistic assessment is that that will, that we will pilot our first zone, meaning we will turn on our first zone in the second half of 2024. Now, that may change. Not, not all of this is within our control. I wish I controlled both sides of the negotiations. I only control one side of the negotiation, so I don't know what issues the Carter's will raise as part of the negotiations and how long those negotiations will take. What I can tell you is that all the things that are within my, my control or the agency's control, we are trying to maximize efficiency, thoughtfulness, and speed. So, as an example, I said I had six members of the department and Business Integrity Commission reviewing those proposals. The DSNY staff that are reviewing those proposals, they are only doing this. They are not doing any other work. And the idea there is to make sure that we go through these proposals as quickly as possible, and that we also give them the care and the attention and the thought that they deserve, both because the Carter's took a lot of, like, time and put a lot of energy, probably a lot of money, into putting them together, and because the implications, I think, of getting this wrong are so problematic.
We have some questions about capacity and staffing later on, but since you're talking about the review committee, how many folks from DSNY, I know you said you have six members of BIC, how many people are doing the reviews just on this right now?
So, we have, we have two separate teams, and there's, there's a firewall between them. They don't communicate. One team, the team that's had a lot of action up until this point, is the team that's not scoring the proposals, but that's reviewing them, that reviewed them for completeness to make sure that no Carter was eliminated for things like administrative errors or things that could be easily and quickly fixed or, or completed. And that was part of the best and final offer process. My goal was to make sure that we went into the final scoring of the proposals, which we're doing now, that we had as many companies, as many Carter's in that scoring process so that we could see some nice competition. We saw that between Phase One and Phase Two of the RFP, the number of respondents dropped from 50 to 34, and I wanted to do, we all wanted to do everything we could to make sure that when it went from response to scoring, that we didn't lose any, any Carter's.
Thank you for that. Excuse me. Okay, so, given the extended RFP process, there were concerns about the rollout. We've gotten a lot of calls and emails. How does DSNY plan to roll out the newly designated Carter's for each zone? You'd mentioned there's a pilot zone, you're looking at implementation second or third quarter of 2024. Can you talk a little bit more about what that will look like?
Sure.
What is the expected zone transition period or customer transition period as well?
So, at a high level, from the time we implement our first zone to full, all-20 zone rollout, we expect that to be a period of about two years. For each zone, we have planned a six-month process. So, two months of outreach to all the businesses in the zone prior to the transition, and then a four-month transition period. So, when we turn that zone on, there will be a four-month period in which the, let's say, 5,000 businesses in the zones will be asked to take that time to move over to one of the authorized Carter's in the zone. The outreach will continue during that four-month transition. So, for each zone, we expect about a six, six months of outreach, two months in advance, four months during transition, and at the end of the four-month transition period, we would expect that all businesses in the zone will be transitioned. Now, we may learn from the pilot zone that that's overdoing it or we're underdoing it, so that may change, but that's what we're planning now for our, our first phase rollout.
Okay. Any indication of what borough will be rolled out first?
No.
Okay.
But interested in your feedback, of course, always.
Just want to talk a little bit about the difficulties in the selection process. Pricing has come up, both in your testimony and then, I know DSNY was quoted somewhere recently about expressing concerns about cost increase. Why did, why did DSNY believe that, or what were you seeing if the original analysis predicted that it wouldn't? And what changes, do you think you can talk about that you've made for preventing this or putting on some guardrails?
Okay. So, in my opinion, anytime that you reduce competition in an industry as dramatically as this reform contemplates, you have a potential for price increases. And so, my focus coming in has been on price, or one of my, one of my big focuses. And as I mentioned in my testimony, I think there are two existential threats to, to commercial waste zones in New York City. Massive price increases and litigation, meaning having to scrap the RFP and do it over, failed RFP, like, no one wants any of that. So, that has, those have been the two things that we have worked to mitigate. I also mentioned in my testimony the experience in Los Angeles, where I understand there were differences, it's three Carter's per zone versus one Carter per zone in LA. But I think that was, that was like a warning sign, like, we gotta get this right, we gotta do it thoughtfully, and price is something that we have to be focused on, especially at a time when small businesses are struggling. I mean, there are 100,000 small businesses in New York City. All of them are going to be impacted by the rollout of commercial waste zones, and I don't want to see massive price increases for small businesses.
Were you seeing increases as you were starting to review? I mean, what is, what is the, what was the kind of, okay, we need to take a minute and, and readjust?
So, the first part of my answer is gonna be unsatisfying to you. I have not seen the proposals, and the reason I have not seen the proposals and the reason why Frank and the members of the team who are actually reviewing them are not sitting up here today is we really want to follow the procurement rules very closely. So, I don't know what the pricing is in the proposals that we have received. I would be thrilled to be wrong. I don't think I am, though. I was concerned about price increases before we even got the proposals back in, like, pretty much from day one, just because I, I believe it is one of the real existential threats to rolling out this very important reform. And in my opinion, based on what I've been briefed on and what I heard, I didn't think that we pulled, that the department had pulled all the levers it needed to pull to do everything in its power to ensure that we don't implement a new system that creates unreasonable and unmanageable burdens on small businesses in, in New York City.
Okay. So, just, just to be clear, there, there's no actual indication that you're aware of, of a price increase, but you want to make sure that there isn't price increases? I think we're all on the same page. Are there any cost safeguards that you have put in place to mitigate something that you're not necessarily sure of is going to take place?
So, I would, the way I would characterize it is, I'm not generally an optimistic person, but I am a very realistic person. And so, I think that the, that my focus on price increases is a realistic concern. So, to that end, we have put in place a number of different, like, safeguards slash changes to how we were approaching things to try to mitigate any potential impacts on price. So, among them, and I mentioned some of this in my testimony, we increased the weight of pricing as part of the evaluation criteria when the committee is meeting to evaluate the proposals. So, the new weight for price is 40% of the score, and that's up, just to give you context, from 35%. We also changed our pricing formula, meaning how we compare apples to apples, the prices in the different proposals. And as I mentioned, And as I mentioned, we included another step, but that was the step of the best and asking the Carters for best and final offers, which is a standard practice, best practice in procurements when you want to get the most competitive pricing possible. Like in, in layman's terms, what it is, is hey, proposers, last chance, give us your best pricing. And it actually works. And I don't know what the best and final offer said or the RFPs said, but I hope to be able to come back here in some time when we have had all, all that information, say that the best and final offers were worth doing. It brought prices down.
Okay. Has there been, I know earlier on in the, maybe before the bill passed, there was concern that there would be a race to the bottom in prices, which would potentially kind of jeopardize or, or create incentives for all of the things that have happened in the past in terms of worker safety, folks being incentivized to cut corners, quality of services dropping down. Have there been any additional discussion of minimum rates to prevent this?
So the law wisely allows us to create minimum rates, which you're referring to. And we have not put in place those minimum rates yet, but it is something that we are going to keep an active eye on. And if and when the time is right, we will be prepared to implement minimum rates. I just don't think that now is the moment for it.
Okay. And then just as a reminder, how does, in this new process, how is the Carter determining the price charged to each business?
When the, when a business signs up with a Carter in this new system, the Carter will do an assessment of the business's waste. And that's how the price is determined, part of that assessment. And then there can be periodic reassessments.
Okay. The RFP indicates that one applicant can be the recipient of 15 awards plus one container award. Do you, are you able to speak to the, to currently the highest number for a single awardee?
We don't have any awardees.
Well, and I guess I will frame it this way. Is there a Carter that you anticipate or a number of Carters that you anticipate having that maximum number?
I haven't seen the proposals.
Okay, thank you. Has DSNY has connected with the LA, with LA? Have you been in contact or in conversation with city government stakeholders?
The department has. And if you'd like to hear more about it, since Deputy Commissioner Anderson led those efforts, Greg, why don't you just say something about it?
Yeah, we've had regular contact, mostly with the LA City Sanitation, who was in charge of overseeing the implementation of the Recycla program. We've also had conversations with advocates on the ground in LA who were obviously a very important part of that implementation and gave us a lot of important learnings about how to, how to move ahead here in New York City.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next topic of budget, do you, is there anything else you would like to add to the overall CWZ timeline? Is there any further delays that you anticipate that will need to be communicated?
I think my testimony covered it all.
Okay, just giving you an opportunity. Okay, we're going to talk about commercial waste zone budget needs. What resources does DSNY need to ensure a successful rollout of CWZ? Specifically, does the preliminary budget for FY '24 impact commercial waste zone implementation positively or negatively?
I think we are in good shape on our budget for commercial waste zones in FY '23. Between PS and OTPS, we have budgeted $6 million. Because those numbers were arrived at when the department was saying that they were going to, that it was going to start implementation sooner, we may have some excess money this year for things like our outreach contract, which won't go into effect until we, we need to start the outreach. And so that money will just move to the year that it's required in.
Thank you. I want to recognize Councilmember Jan Gutierrez. Thank you for joining us. You mentioned you, you're hoping to have about 20 people working on CWZ. Can you reconfirm the, your headcount for this, for this specific project?
Sure. Today, we have 20 civilian staff who spend a lot, if not all of their time, on commercial... Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. I was looking at the wrong month. Today, February 2023, we have 17 civilian staff who spend all or most, much of their time on commercial waste zones. And in addition to that, we have already trained and put through our sanitation police academy, 10 new sanitation police officers who will be doing the enforcement efforts around that. They just graduated last month. We have also posted for three additional positions that we hope to be hiring in the next weeks, months. And we expect that by June of this year, our civilian staff dedicated to or spend most of, or much of their time on will go to 20 people. But I want to be really clear that the work of implementing commercial waste zones is really a department-wide approach. It's not just the staff in the commercial waste zones. We would really be shortchanging the program if we just had one bureau working on it. And that's because we can't, we wouldn't be able to leverage the real expertise that is across the department and in particular in a number of highly specialized business units that we've created. So as an example, we brought on an assistant commissioner for outreach who has decades of experience managing grassroots outreach campaigns. That is the type of person who will be largely dedicated while this is ongoing during implementation to commercial waste zones. But he doesn't work in the Bureau of Commercial Waste. He's not included in my civilian headcount there because when the time is right, he'll also be working on outreach for set out times or outreach for the rollout of curbside organics. Same idea like with our IT team. We've brought in some really talented IT professionals who looked at the system that, that the department had been building for the, the Carters to report their information to. I mean, that reporting will be key to making this program work or not. And it wasn't going to work. It was not easy to use. It wasn't presenting the information to the enforcement teams in a reasonable, usable way. And so the IT team and the business analysts, who happened not to work in commercial waste, but work in IT or program management, came in, looked at it, redefined requirements and set it on the right course. So I don't have to go through every business unit.
No, but we got to center enlisting all of the talent in the department for this as needed at different phases. I just, in terms of outreach, just because we touched on it in May, and I know that Councilmember Menon will touch on some of this, last year in May, there was testimony that DSNY would begin business outreach soon with 30 positions focused on outreach and education. Given this, the, the rollout phases longer, we understand. Has DSNY started conducting any critical business outreach to ensure folks are aware and prepared for upcoming changes?
No, because it's too soon. I think one of the lessons I've learned in my, my time in government working on outreach campaigns is when you start your outreach, you need to have a very clear message to communicate. And given that we don't have awardees, we can't tell businesses who the authorized Carters are in their zones, in my opinion, it is premature to start outreach. But we are doing everything we need to do so that when it is time to start outreach, we're ready. As an example, we have a concurrent RFP going on right now to hire an outreach vendor that will provide people, outreach associates, so that we need to surge our staffing for a period of two years on commercial waste zone outreach. They can do it. And the other thing that's required of that vendor and the RFP is that we fully comply with Local Law 30 and that we have outreach associates who can speak all of the various languages that are required.
Okay, so there was an adjustment there. One thing that we had heard was that CWZ staff had been reassigned to the Queens Organic Program. I just want to hear more about that. If you could confirm it or what you have to say about that. And then for the period of time that, when that is ready to go, can you guarantee that the staff that are supposed to be on this will stay dedicated to this as a, as a top priority?
Yes, I can guarantee that when it is showtime for that outreach staff on commercial waste zones, this is all they're going to be doing. So what happened with the organics rollout in Queens, which I think was a real key to the success of that program. I had looked at other outreach programs that the department had done for previous curbside organics rollouts, and I found them to be insufficient. And I wanted, I thought it was important that we knock on every door in Queens, certainly every door we could, could get to, meaning doors for residences that were in buildings that were 10 families or less. And that's exactly what we did. And in order, with clear, simple messaging, multiple languages. And in order to do that, in order to reach 2.2 million people or as many of the 2.2 million people that would answer the doors and if not leave a mailer on their doorstep, we hired a vendor, but we also asked people in the department who were, were not as busy as they could have been to step up and participate in those outreach efforts. So we pulled civilian staff from various parts of the department for a period of about...
Did you pull staff who were on the CWZ project?
Sure, because we hadn't started the outreach for commercial waste yet, right?
No, but who were working on, for example, RFPs or looking at what was coming in? Review, folks who were doing review.
We did not, I don't know the details of every single person who was pulled, but my direction and my understanding is that we did not pull people whose time was being spent looking at the proposals for completeness. And that we, my direction was to pull people who were being underutilized at that time.
Okay, thank you. So this year, there's two major projects. You've got, you're rolling out the curbside pilot all over the city very quickly and this. And you've got a preliminary budget cut, called for 6% across the board, across, including vacancies. DSNY has 98 vacant positions. So given these two massive projects, you feel confident that you will be able to execute both of these programs with the resources that you have?
I do, we got this.
Okay.
And I also am very clear that if that changes, that I can communicate what the need will be. I mean, it is a priority for this administration to roll out curbside organics to every New York City resident over the next 20 months. It is also a priority of this administration to roll out commercial waste zones and to do both once and to do them right.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez. Thank you for joining us. And I'm going to turn it over to my co-chairman for her questions.
Thank you so much. So I want to build upon a question that Councilmember Nurse asked, which was, you were talking about potential price increases to small businesses. And I believe what you said is that you, that the agency didn't pull all the levers within its power. Can you elaborate on what you meant and what should the agency have done?
Sure. I'll go through a few of them. Among the things, in the timeline for implementation that I was handed when I showed up, it didn't account for issuing a best and final offer, as an example. So we issued a best and final offer. Took a few months to write and then for the respondents to, to respond. It didn't include things, the plans didn't include things like the tedious, painstaking work required to go through all 34 proposals, some of which were like over a thousand pages to make sure that all the information was included so that no vendor was eliminated, no, no proposer was eliminated for a paperwork problem. There, the idea is to make sure that we have as much competition as possible. Another thing that we did was we increased the weight in the evaluation process of pricing. So there's three categories. There's price, technical proposals, and capacity operations and compliance history. So we increased the weight of the, the first category, price, from 35% to 40%. Those are the types of things that we did. There are others. Those are the types of things that we did to ensure that we were pulling the levers we could pull to ensure that prices stayed low.
Now, you've laid out a new timeline, including this pilot. You said in your testimony that you reserve the right to revisit the timeline. How confident are you that you'll be able to meet this new timeline?
As I said before, Councilmember, I am not an optimistic person, but I am a realistic person. And given everything I know sitting here today, I think the timeline that I laid out is realistic. However, I also know that there is a lot that is going to happen over the next year and change, much of what is in my control, some of which isn't in my control or the agency's control. If the negotiations, for example, take a year instead of six months, then I may be coming back to you and saying, sorry, have new information. It's not going to be the second quarter of 2024. So given what I know today, given my experience, 15 years managing contracts and programs in New York City, I think that we will start our first pilot in the second half of 2024. But I also know that things can change between now and then. And what I commit to you is that I will be open with this council. I will be open with you and your staff if things do change. And I will be able to, when I come to you, I would be able to communicate and explain a real good reason why.
Okay, I want to drill down a little bit as the chair of the Small Business Committee on the outreach to small businesses. And I know you said you have not begun outreach. I am concerned about that, I have to say, because we have over 200,000 small businesses. I've heard from many of them who have a lot of questions about the plan. So when do you anticipate that you will begin outreach? And what will specifically that outreach look like? And how much are you spending on outreach?
The outreach for each of the 20 zones will be a six-month period. The first two months will be pre-transition. So just, we, we estimate there about 5,000 businesses on average in each zone. So the first two months, we'll be reaching out to the businesses in the zone, letting them know this is coming and letting them know that there will be a four-month transition period where in that time period, they will have to switch from their existing Carter to one of the new authorized Carters. We'll give them information about who the Carters are in their zone. And we will be clear that it is expected that the end of those six months or at the end of the four-month transition period, that all businesses in that zone would be required to make the switch. So it's, the outreach is six months to in advance, four during the transition per zone. As I mentioned before, we have put out already the RFP and gotten responses back from interested vendors for the outreach contract. And right now, the, can I say what the budget is for it? Okay, just didn't want to give away private information. Right now, the budget for that is $2.7 million.
Okay. And what's the scope of the contract? What type of outreach will be conducted?
It is a very wide scope. It is a very wide scope. We expect that our outreach vendor will do about 10 to 20 site visits per day, totaling about 7,500 visits per month, and about 100,000 visits overall, because that's the number of businesses we have. It's going to be a mixture of door-to-door canvassing, mailers, phone calls, all of the different types of outreach you could do in the pre-transition phase and also during the transition phase. And as I mentioned before, one of the requirements we put into the RFP is that all of it be language accessible according to the requirements of Local Law 30.
Are you going beyond local law in terms of language access? Are you limiting to those languages?
The languages that we've put a high priority on are Spanish, Mandarin, Chinese, Cantonese, Russian, Korean, Haitian, Creole, Arabic, Bengali, Hindi, Urdu, Yiddish, and Hebrew. And those are the ones where the vendor will be required to have people who are fluent in those languages. Beyond those languages, we will make accommodations like we used in the vaccine education outreach, where we use this Language Line app that provides for translation services.
Okay, what's the coordination with SBS? I know you mentioned you've spoken to Commissioner Kim, but what is SBS's role specifically in implementation of this?
So in my conversations, excuse me, I'm just pulling up my notes right here, I'm not looking at my email. In my conversations with Commissioner Kim, we discussed how SBS can be helpful in coordinating some pieces of the outreach, in particular, working with them to coordinate outreach to bids, to merchant associations, to community-based organizations, and to other community partner organizations. This is an area where they have a huge amount of expertise. In my history, particularly during the pandemic, I worked very closely with SBS during that, doing that type of thing, that type of outreach, but as it related to vaccinations.
Okay, and will there be new penalties that'll be introduced for businesses under this? Can you speak a little bit?
No.
Okay. Last year, the Business Integrity Commission raised a rate cap to collect waste by 9%. The last time, as you know, the BIC did this was in 2018. Does administration anticipate any other additional increases?
Not that I know of, but there is a standard process to review those rates every two years.
Okay. One other question I have is, at a recent committee on small business hearing on food donation, we learned that DSNY enforcement of existing organics recycling rules for large food waste generating businesses such as grocery stores, chain restaurants, was very minimal, and that very few citations had been issued for businesses that are failing to properly recycle and compost. So does the agency have any plan to ensure that businesses will be able to more easily donate and recycle edible food and food scraps in the interim while we wait for full implementation of Local Law 199?
Sorry, I was, while you were asking the question, I was pulling up the enforcement numbers. Do you want the enforcement numbers?
Yes, 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 definitely.
Okay. So during the pandemic, I have to say, there was very minimal enforcement from the department, but specifically minimal enforcement around commercial organics. We have, last year, stepped up some enforcement of commercial organics. Last year, we issued 1,419 summonses related to the commercial organics laws. In 2021, by comparison, there was 103.
Okay, and then the latter part of my question is, what will the agency do to ensure that businesses will be more able to donate?
Oh, on donations, we have a program called Donate NYC, which Greg can speak to.
Yes, Councilmember, as I described at the hearing last month, we have our Donate NYC Food Portal, which is open to any business who wants to donate food and has several hundred recipients registered who can receive that food, and aims to connect businesses with recipients in their neighborhood. So that's available to all food-related businesses that are both covered and not covered by the commercial organics law. And we continue to do, to work with partners to expand their capacity to receive donated food.
Okay, I mean, as you and I discussed before, and as you know, I introduced a bill to try to expand this program, to have restaurants be able to donate food and in exchange, receive reductions in fines, I really urge the agency to take a look at that and to consider expanding upon that program in that fashion.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the Chair. Thank you.
Okay, I want to recognize some of our, almost our whole Bronx delegation is here, Councilmembers Almanca, Councilmember Farias. I just have two more questions and then opening it up to other members. There was a question about, will written agreements, if you can speak on this, between businesses and Carters be language accessible or are required to be language accessible?
Greg.
Yeah, so the Carters are required to have a language access plan so that they are communicating with customers in a variety of languages. The written agreements themselves, I think, we'll have to come back to that, just because there are some legal requirements as far as contracts and the language of contracts. But certainly, we expect the Carters to be providing language access tools, and we will be enforcing that through the contract.
Okay, and that's going to be under the CWZ-specific folks? Or whose job is it to kind of enforce that?
CWZ.
Or ensure it?
CWZ.
Okay. Okay, we're going to open it up to members. Thank you all for being patient. We're going to start with Councilmember Brooks Powers, but then we'll have Ose and Gutierrez. So you'll be on standby.
Thank you, Chairs, and hello, Commissioner Tuch. It's great to see you.
Good to see you.
So I just have a few quick questions. In your testimony, you mentioned that Los Angeles's program had creative, exclusive, non-competitive zones. You identified this as a difference between the Department of Sanitation's program in L.A.'s. As sanitation will be authorized in multiple Carters in each zone, however, we are still limiting competition to a max of three Carters per zone. So how are we deciding to what degree we limit competition in each zone? How do we strike the balance between customer choice and increased efficiency?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. The local law that was passed in 2019 actually sets out the new paradigm, which is three Carters in each of 20 zones. My focus over the past eight, nine months, as it relates to commercial waste zones, or one of my focuses, has been getting at the point that you made, I think, exactly. It's been doing everything we can, given this new paradigm, to pull all of the levers in the hopes that prices won't go up, given the more limited competition. I unfortunately, sitting here today, don't have that answer for you. I don't have the crystal ball, because I haven't seen the proposals, because we have to follow really the letter of the law on all the procurement steps. So it's not to open this program up to legal jeopardy. But in my testimony and our discussions today, I've gone through a number of the levers that we have pulled, that are in our power to pull, to do everything we can to prevent price increases on small businesses at a time when small businesses are hurting.
And I just want to wrap up with questions surrounding MWBE participation. So I'll just ask them all, because I'd like to get an answer to them. So one, is sanitation doing anything to ensure MWBE participation as the RFP process proceeds? Has sanitation set any MWBE utilization targets as it works through awarding contracts? Does sanitation know how many qualified MWBEs are operating in this industry? And what outreach has sanitation done to ensure awareness among MWBE businesses that the RFP process is underway?
So one thing, and I'm going to let Deputy Commissioner Anderson give a full answer to your question, one thing I was shocked by when I showed up at the Department of Sanitation was how few MWBEs participate in the waste management space. Lots of the waste transfer stations, like the infrastructure for waste management in New York City, located in black and brown communities, and very few of the players in the waste management market are MWBEs. And so that's one thing that we definitely need to make progress on. Now, I can't control who submits a proposal under our RFP, but one of the things that our RFP allows for is for new subcontractors to work with awardees. So to the extent that there are MWBEs who are not selected or didn't propose but want to participate in the commercial waste market in New York City, there will be opportunities in the form of subcontracts. Greg, could you answer the rest of the Councilmembers' detailed questions?
Sure, absolutely. So as far as the participation goal specifically, we were unable to set an MWBE participation goal because we're not actually spending the city's money here. We're regulating the industry for the benefit of the businesses and the Carters. For the number of qualified-
I'm sorry, I just want to pause right there. But these are contracts to do city work, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then it should still have an MWBE participation regardless if it's spending the money of the city or not. The city has a 30% goal across the contracts in this city, and I expect sanitation would follow that as well.
Understood, Councilmember. As far as the number of qualified MWBEs, so in order to participate in commercial waste zones, businesses had to be licensed Carters by the Business Integrity Commission. I think, off the top of my head, I can think of maybe fewer than 10, five, who are certified MWBEs and are licensed by the Business Integrity Commission. As the Commissioner said, very little MWBE participation in this industry as a whole, something that sanitation has been working for several years to try to improve. But we have done a significant amount of outreach to MWBEs in other adjacent sectors. So, you know, private Carters need services like truck repair. For commercial waste zones, they'll need services like waste auditing and things like that. So we've done outreach in partnership with the Mayor's Office of MWBEs, in partnership with SBS, to those certified businesses in those sectors, to encourage them to connect with Carters who are proposers. We've done resources. We had a virtual resource fair about a year ago during the RFP phase. So those are the steps that we've taken to try to improve MWBE participation.
Thank you for that. I would just say, I encourage the Department of Sanitation to leverage the RFP process and maybe explore matchmaking and doing events that could foster these relationships so that you would see subcontractors partnering with primes and finding ways to scale these businesses up so that they don't always have to be subcontractors as well, and we can diversify the pool of responders to RFPs in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brooks Powers. I did have a question about, there was a while ago, the SOAR program that was in, or was it Kevin Wells who was running that at one point, to try to bring diversity? I know this is a problem across the state, just basically no MWBE folks. Just while we're on the topic, a quick status of the program, if it exists.
Yeah, so Kevin was previously our Chief Supplier Diversity Officer. He left for other opportunities, I think, over a year ago at this point. And yes, he did some of that work to try to encourage MWBE participation, expand MWBE businesses in the waste sector and adjacent sectors. That work obviously continues through the work of the department's ACO, through the contracting process that we have. We do work with the Mayor's Office of MWBEs to try to set incredibly ambitious goals, understanding that the sector lacks MWBE participation.
I would just add one other thing. I think I'm getting this right. During the pandemic, the, two of the agencies that had the highest level of MWBE participation were the Department of Sanitation and Do It. And so not, which I ran, not only has MWBE participation, increasing MWBE participation been a priority for the Department of Sanitation, but I, coming in here and bringing to it my own commitment to doing it, as I mentioned, we're not there on the waste industry, but we can make progress.
Thank you for that. I do want to recognize, we have our Brooklyn Borough President, Antonio Reynosa, in the back, is going to be testifying later. I don't know the protocol around these things, so I just thought better safe than sorry. Next up, we're going to have questions around, from Councilmember Ose.
Thank you, Chair Nurse and Chair Menon. Good morning, Commissioner and folks from the Department of Sanitation. I know questions that are being asked today are mainly pertaining to, you know, commercial waste zones and how they're going to affect our small businesses, but I would be doing a disservice to my constituents if I did not ask about commercial waste zones and some of their particular personal concerns that they have with commercial waste zones and how they affect quality-of-life issues and beds die. And one of the first concerns that I do want to inquire about is, you know, the pollution, especially the smog that some residents feel stems from commercial waste zones that go throughout our district. And I wanted to ask how the agency is planning to ensure smog and pollution from these trucks do not impact our neighborhoods.
One of the great benefits that we saw in the environmental review that was the underpinning of the local law for commercial waste zones was a 50% reduction in truck traffic associated with the program. So reducing the smog and the air pollution, there are many different benefits of implementing a system like commercial waste zones. High among them is the issue that you are raising. And so as we roll this program out, that is one of the benefits that you and I think your constituents will see and feel. It's among the reasons that we feel real urgency to get this done, and get this done in a way that will allow it to stick in New York City for the future.
Thank you for that response. And you did answer my second question, which was about, you know, reducing traffic and potential vehicular fatalities or accidents that could stem from, you know, clogged streets. So thanks for answering that question, and please keep me in the loop on the progress that this implementation is making in regards to those quality-of-life issues.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ose. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair Nurse and Chair Menon. And thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, the DSNY team, for being here. The commercial waste zoning bill is something that's very personal to North Brooklyn specifically, but obviously all of the communities that you mentioned, communities of color. And so we have a deep, deep commitment and investment in seeing this roll out in an efficient and effective way. I wanted you to expand a little bit. I was streaming your testimony, Commissioner. Can you share a little bit about what, how you intend to meet the requirement or the goal for the head count to fully roll out this program?
Sure. Right now, we are fully staffed based on what the needs of the program are today.
Okay.
As this progresses, the staffing needs will change, and we stand prepared to do hiring. Today, we're hiring for three different positions that we think are needed, starting like the June timeframe, so we'll have them all in place. But one of the things that I was explaining to your colleague, Chair Nurse, was that the rollout of commercial waste zones is something that is getting the full weight of, has the full weight of the department behind. So yes, we have about 17 civilians in the Bureau of Commercial Waste. We have trained 10 police officers for this purpose. We're hiring three others. But we're also calling on expertise, for example, in our IT- But we're also calling on expertise, for example, in our IT department and in our outreach unit and in our program management office, certainly in our legal department and our ACCO's office, to supplement where and when those specific areas of expertise are required. The other thing we're doing is, we've hired our own outreach team in the Bureau of Commercial Waste, but we're putting in place a contract with an outside vendor to allow surge capacity for our outreach efforts, and in particular, the type of language access that we want and New Yorkers want and deserve. So that will allow for the surge staffing, which should be about a period of two years, we expect right now.
Thank you. Commissioner, you mentioned at the top of your testimony that you had reservations about how, you know, businesses could be impacted because Carter's could very well increase cost. And I'm hoping that you can expand on that. But I do just want to say that, you know, we have the Brooklyn Borough President Reynoso here, who championed this bill in the last term and I think worked really hard to make sure that we were taking lessons from LA, for example, to avoid that here in New York. And there were specific steps in that legislation, rolling it out, you know, increasing the amount of Carter's to a particular zone. I think those efforts were made, so I would love for you to expand on where that reservation stems from, because I think it's an opportunity, if it's not real, if it's not rooted in anything that's happened here yet, and the bill goes out of its way to delineate how to avoid that, it's an opportunity to maybe be more aggressive. It's an opportunity to really start, you know, increasing the viability of this program in a more efficient way.
Yeah, and I've spoken a few times to Borough President Reynoso about this. Sort of explained my obsessive fear about-
That's not rooted in a whole lot at this point, correct?
Well, let's discuss it. But my fear about impacts of potential price increases on small businesses at a time when small businesses are already struggling. I have not seen the responses to the RFPs, so I don't know what the pricing is or will be. What I can tell you is, for 65 positions, we only have 34 proposers. For the first part of the RFP, we had 50 people, 50 companies express interest. My opinion, whenever you are limiting competition in the way that this law requires, you have to be thinking about, and for me, worrying about, price increases on small businesses. And by thinking about it and worrying about it upfront, we can do things that don't extend the timeline, but that can mitigate those price increases. And I outlined a bunch of them in my testimony. I also have to agree with you 100% that the way that this local law was written was absolutely brilliant. The team that-
Congrats.
The team that worked on it did learn a lot of lessons from LA, and those lessons are all baked into the local law. Basic things like going to three Carter's instead of one, but the local law is very, very well done. As the person now in charge of like taking this ball over the finish line and implementing the program, I need to make sure that I am being as thoughtful in my job as the lawmakers were who wrote the legislation. And the only way that I can be thoughtful in my job is by worrying about the existential threats to the program, among them, not having a failed procurement, not having the thing brought down by litigation, and price increases on our 100,000 businesses in New York City that have been through a lot recently.
Thank you. I do, I'll do a second round of questions, but I appreciate that you said all these things don't necessarily need to have an impact on the delay or the rollout of the program. And I just want to commend that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we'll, you know, as more information comes and as you're starting to understand, able to look at the pricing, it would be interesting to see, because it seems like the density of customers is supposed to help with operations costs, right? Like, we're talking about volume, less stops, less going through a bunch of different boroughs, less crisscrossing. All of that's supposed to do it. The inclusion of waste audits and surveying will allow businesses to understand, what exactly am I throwing away? I've only looked at it every six months or every two years. Things have changed. So all of this stuff has been baked in, so I appreciate your obsession with those existential threats. I think that's good. We need someone at the helm to be worrying about all the cracks that could happen. But I just hope that we're not delaying things based on that.
The only time that our focus on price added to this whole process was about two and a half months, because in my opinion, I thought we needed to follow the procurement best practice of issuing best and final offers, because that's how you really get your best pricing. It's fairly standard. That is the only change in the timeline that this real focus on pricing has created. We, I am the only commissioner to not extend the RFP deadline. I came under enormous pressure to do that. I didn't. I thought the eight months that the Carter's had was fair and reasonable. So the work that I'm talking about is all happening while all the other necessary steps are happening, not introducing new time, with the exception of the best and final offer.
I appreciate that. Okay, we have Councilmember Botcher.
Thank you, Chair. So I got to give you some credit, Commissioner. I came today prepared to give you a hard time about the implementation timeline, because the de Blasio administration had told us that it would get started around now, early 2023. And your testimony provided, to me, a detailed explanation of the enormity of the RFP process, the complexity of the RFP process, and why it's so important that it be done correctly. So thank you for your testimony with all that detail. I want to ask you about the recycling in organics. In your testimony, you said that the new system, commercial waste zones, will nearly double the commercial diversion rate for recyclables and organics by requiring that Carter's actually provide these services and offer customers incentives. What is the current diversion rate for recycling, commercial recycling? What is the current diversion rate for organics recycling? What do you anticipate those to be under the commercial waste zone system? And what are the incentives you speak of in your testimony that will help us increase those rates?
So I'm going to give you numbers, but the real answer is, we just don't know. And the reason that we don't know is because we have terrible data from the commercial carting industry about these very basic questions that should have very basic answers that you posed. So we, with, I hate talking about bad data, but I'll just do it, and you'll understand that caveat. The bad data that we have, we think that it's going to, the diversion rate will more than double from 22 percent?
25 to 44.
From 25% to 44%, given the new commercial waste zone paradigm when it is implemented. And there are several reasons. Among them, today, many Carter's don't offer composting services, may not offer recycling services. They will not only be required to do that, they will be required to offer both of those services at a cheaper price than trash collection, than refuse. And so those are among the reasons why I expect that the diversion rate will increase, although I have no confidence that the actual diversion rate is 25% today.
Why only 44%?
Well, it's doubling first. Second, today, there are mandates in place for commercial organics for only certain types of businesses. Those businesses include, you know, certain restaurants, food service businesses, that type, but it's not a universal mandate on businesses to divert organic waste, which makes up a huge percentage of our waste stream in New York City.
I want to see a 100% diversion rate.
You and me both.
And I would like to work with you and our chair to make a lot of progress between now and the implementation date to set much higher goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Hopefully, the CWZ gets us there, right? So we're not doing these, oh, how many square feet do you have, this like matrix grid?
Between-
Just everybody doing this, and we're separating boom, boom, boom. We're not doing all these games.
Between universal curbside composting, which could be rolled out over the next 20 months, and commercial waste zones, those two things are the two biggest levers that this city can pull to meaningfully impact our diversion rate in New York City, which has not budged in a while. Like, if I had to like give a list of like the top things, one and two. Don't know which order. But I do feel like this council, prior councils, and the department is prioritizing now some very exciting things that can make a real impact toward achieving the goals that the city's been talking about for a really long time.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Velazquez.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you, co-chairs, Nurse and Menon. First off, in a twist of fate, I want to thank sanitation workers Anthony Russo, James Garcia, Walsh, and Phil Carroll. I had an incident this morning, and they were super in getting me out of it. So I want to give credit to where credit's due, and I want to really recognize our uniform men like that. That being said, I want to go back to a conversation earlier with Councilmember Nurse when we discussed a little bit about the minimum rates and how you're looking at them. If there's not an intention to require employee protection such as base salary and/or if there is not a minimum rate, is there an intention to require employee protection such as base salary and/or benefits?
So I just want to correct one thing, and then I want Deputy Commissioner Anderson to answer in some more detail. The law allows us to create minimum rates. That is a lever we can pull. We will pull that lever if and when it is needed. I'm not prejudging whether it will be needed or not, but it is something that we are prepared to do. Greg, can you go through the second part of the council member's question?
Sure. Thank you for the question, council member. So on the issue, so on the issue generally of a race to the bottom, the whole, one of the fundamental premises of this approach is that we are introducing regulation and minimum standards in areas where we have not had regulation and minimum standards before. And so as a whole, and one of the reasons we are taking our time to do this carefully and thoughtfully and do it right, is because these contracts will include several dozens of new requirements on Carter's, some of which are requirements to follow existing state, federal, local laws, some of which are fundamentally new requirements on transparency, accountability, safety, and other worker protections. So we think that by putting those requirements in place, we can avoid creating a race to the bottom. That said, as the Commissioner mentioned, if we see a dynamic like that occurring, we will absolutely step in and use that regulatory authority. On the issue of pay for workers specifically, which you mentioned, council member, this is something that we've gone back and forth with stakeholders on for several years. We are limited because of state and federal preemptions from how much we can sort of pull those levers. But we are certainly looking at pay, staffing levels, and other factors as part of the RFP process. It's not something that we're necessarily evaluating specifically, but it's part of the submission, and it's something that we will be keeping a close eye on going forward.
Perfect. And I have one more question, back to what the Commissioner was mentioning earlier, about 65 positions, only 34 proposals, and just the intention of it all. How do we work to prevent monopolies? Because as you mentioned, the effects go to the smell of businesses when they end up paying more because of limited competition.
Well, a few things. First, I think Borough President, then Chair Reynoso did a lot of that work for us by putting in place a law that allows for three Carter's in each of 20 zones, rather than, as they did in LA, one Carter. So I think some of that is already done for us. The other thing that the RFP allows is for the Carter's to bring in, when needed, new subcontractors. And so that's a way of ensuring that we have enough participation in the commercial waste market. But as for who gets what zones, that will be done by the letter of the procurement law, which is why we're so thoughtful about what the criteria for evaluating those proposals is. It can only be based on that.
Thank you.
And thank you for the shout-out to our sanitation workers.
Yeah, it's also that some of these companies just didn't qualify because they didn't have the capacity. There've been, my understanding, there's been some mergers and acquisitions. Some people are just out of business. So it's not necessarily that, you know, this process was also meant to weed out bad actors, right? So there were some pretty bad egregious actors that, quite frankly, needed to go. So we might have less than possible, but it sounds like we do have enough people to fulfill all the zones, as you mentioned earlier. Fingers crossed. Okay, so Councilmember Salamanca, then Fari, oh, Fari is left. Wrestler, Councilmember Wrestler is also here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
First, I want to thank you and your agency for working with my office on tackling illegal dumping with the sanitation cameras that we were able to install. It's refreshing to see on your social media how you're exposing these bad actors who are taking advantage of isolated areas, not just in my district, but throughout the city of New York. So I just want to say thank you. And kudos to whoever's managing your social media. It's a-
Fabulous team.
They're doing a great job, so.
Yes, they are.
All right, thank you. I want to go back to some of the concerns that I have from business owners in terms of prices. I have a few bids. I had the world's largest food markets, produce meat, fish market. And so there, there's a lot of waste. And the concern is that because once this zoning takes effect, they will have less options in terms of who they can choose from, that their costs will increase. And I'm not just hearing it from businesses, but these businesses in the markets are talking to their customers, and their customers are asking me these questions. Number one, when will this zoning take effect? How do we know that their costs will not increase? I do not know how to answer that. How do I answer them?
So I think for the first time today, you're getting here a realistic answer to when. And that answer is, we expect for, to first do one zone, pilot zone, and we expect to roll out that pilot zone in the second half of 2024. So about a little over a year from now. And then after that, we expect to do the other 19 zones over the next two years. So you're looking at basically a three-year rollout of the whole thing. And then on the topic of price, and I covered this in some detail in my testimony, I am very concerned that there could be price increases associated with limiting the amount of competition in this market. But what I've said is, we have, as the people who are administering the program, this is our area of extreme focus, and we are pulling every lever that we can- And we are pulling every lever that we can under the law to ensure that we mitigate any price increases to the extent that we can by doing things that I think are reasonable and rational. So for example, issuing a best and final offer to get, to say to all the proposers, hey, one more chance. Are you sure that's your best pricing? If not, give me better pricing. So we did that. We also increased the percentage that price plays in the scoring of each of the proposals. So when I showed up, it was about 35%. We increased that to 40%. We changed the algorithm for calculating scores on price as well. We've pulled as many levers as we can to try to mitigate any potential cost increases. I don't have a crystal ball. I haven't seen the proposals. I don't know if costs will go up. I think it's reasonable to worry that they will. And we'll have more to say on what happened as soon as we have awardees and contracts.
All right, just very quickly, thank you, Madam Chair, for the extended time. Two things. You mentioned pilot zone. Who's going to be the first pilot zone?
I don't know.
All right. Second is, I'm also getting this concern. I also, because in Hunts Point, I also have what's called the construction and debris transfer stations, where they will come and they will drop off. The concern is, is because in this, as part of this waste zoning, we're not just tackling the carriers, but we're also addressing the transfer stations. And their capacity in certain transfer stations, at least in my district, are decreasing, which I'm extremely happy because that means there's less trucks coming into my community. But their concern is that because of that, prices may go up as well. And how are we ensuring that other communities that can accommodate transfer stations are actually getting transfer stations since you're decreasing capacity in communities such as Hunts Point?
Okay. So construction debris is not included as part of the new commercial waste zone law. So you'd mentioned like some businesses that do construction debris. That is completely separate from commercial waste zones. And then the second question was how do we ensure that we're spreading capacity around?
So I have two transfer stations, right? I have construction and debris and then I have regular garbage. And so, and we've decreased capacity in these transfer stations for regular garbage. How are we ensuring, so they have, the garbage has to go somewhere.
Yep.
Right? For transfer stations. And if you're decreasing capacity here, where is that garbage going to go? And how are we ensuring that communities that are, that can bring, that you can build transfer stations in are actually going to get these transfer stations? How are we ensuring equity?
So as part of this RFP process, we asked each of the proposers for their plans for how and where they would be moving the material around. And that will be included, that is included as one of the things that is scored as part of the scoring process for the proposals. So it is accounted for. But I think the thing that you're aiming on more than that answer would suggest is our work around waste equity. And for that, I would like Deputy Commissioner Anderson, who has been there since the passage of the waste equity law and has overseen the department's incredible efforts around waste equity, to talk not just about what has been done, but what the future looks like.
Yeah, thank you for that question, council member. And, you know, I think the South Bronx and Hunts Point in particular obviously has borne the burden of waste transfer infrastructure for a very long time, far too long. So the waste equity law, Local Law 152 of 2018, is in full effect, has reduced transfer station permitted capacity by over 10,000 tons per day in four districts, two districts in the Bronx, one in Brooklyn, one in Southeast Queens. And what that's intended to do is incentivize the creation of new capacity elsewhere. That said, we are limited by zoning and other siting requirements on where new transfer stations can go. So we can't just open new transfer stations in every district, although, you know, certainly happy to have conversations with council about how that industry could change going forward. But we are certainly, you know, seeing interest from some potential transfer stations in improving the facilities that they operate, enclosing facilities that have not previously been enclosed, investing in new machinery and equipment. So those are the kinds of changes that we want to see. We want to see not only more equitable distribution of this burden across the city, but also just better actors and better facilities that are relying less on truck export, doing more recycling, treating workers better. So I think that's what waste equity starts the process of and we certainly look forward to working with the council on further changes to that.
All right, that's why we've introduced the bill around commercial waste transfer stations. Because there are facilities that are well-run that could be part of the solution to what you're raising. I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you so much, Chair Nurse, and for your exceptional leadership of this committee and on this issue. And, you know, we're fortunate to be joined by your predecessor today, another champion from North Brooklyn, who previously chaired the sanitation committee, Borough President Reynoso, who of course was the lead sponsor on this bill. And Councilmember Gutierrez was his chief of staff and with him every step of the way. He also was the lead sponsor on the waste equity bill and many other key pieces of legislation. As you remember well, Greg, because you were there negotiating with us. But I do believe commercial waste zones was the single most important bill that then Councilmember Reynoso passed. And let me just start, well, I'll say I have an enormous amount of respect for the leadership of the Department of Sanitation and greatly appreciate your work. We're fortunate to have somebody as sharp as Commissioner Tisch leading the agency. I do want to just ask Deputy Commissioner Anderson the same question I asked you at the last hearing. I buttonholed you. How many years have you been working on this issue?
Coming up nine next month.
Nine next month. There was an agreement between the previous administration and the city council on the terms of commercial waste zones in the first de Blasio term many, many, many years ago. And here we are still waiting for implementation. I think we're talking a lot about what we don't know. There's a lot of speculation about cost. But I think it's important to just take a moment to recognize what we do know, that this bill will make an enormous difference in advancing environmental justice and worker justice and safety in our communities. We will absolutely improve the safety conditions for workers. I fully expect we will improve compensation for workers. We will reduce, we will increase the amounts of recycling and organics that are collected in New York City. We will reduce the amount of truck miles traveled. These are deliverables that will be achieved when commercial waste zones are finally implemented. But there's been a lot of talk about speculation on cost. But I don't see the data to back up the speculation on cost increases to small businesses. What data do we have, Commissioner, that's informing your insistence that costs are going up for small businesses?
First of all, you're mischaracterizing my remarks, I think. I have not insisted that small businesses are going up. I have said very clearly that price increases are among the top existential threats to this program that could undermine years' worth of advocacy by yourself, by lots of others, and decades' worth of hard, brilliant work by Deputy Commissioner Anderson on getting this program done. And I don't want that to happen on my watch.
Neither do I.
And my focus on keeping prices down and doing everything that I can to keep prices down has not affected the timeline except for I introduced a two-and-a-half-month best and final offer period, which hadn't been contemplated, so that we could follow the very basic standard procurement process of asking Carter's to give us their best pricing. All of the other work that we have done around pricing, which has been thoughtful and voluminous, has happened in parallel while all of these other steps were going on and has not introduced new timeline whatsoever.
But we have experienced significant delays.
I would further say that the timeline that the last administration gave this council for when this is going to be rolled out was wildly unrealistic. Perhaps it was optimistic, but it wasn't realistic. I'm a very realistic person. You know me, we've worked together a very long time. I get things done. This mayor has told me, get this done. We are getting it done. We are getting it done in a realistic way, on a very clear timeline. I have said to your colleagues that some of the things that are going to happen over the next year plus are out of our control. But it was not realistic to think that the city was going to go through a procurement for 65 contracts that are going to be with the city for decades to come in under a year. It wasn't going to happen. You know that. You know to get a single contract in place can take more than a year to do. Here, we're talking about 65. And so we have made this a priority. Scoring these proposals, doing it fairly, negotiating with the vendors. We are not delaying. We are not stalling. We are being absolutely transparent and realistic about what it's going to take.
I appreciate the answer, Commissioner Tisch, and appreciate your thoughtfulness about trying to keep costs down for small businesses. That's a goal that we certainly all share. But it's important to recognize, nine years after Deputy Commissioner Anderson began working on this project, seven years after we had agreed upon terms between the council administration on commercial waste zones, we're still three years away from implementing it citywide. So that is an extremely slow timeline. We have suffered meaningful delays, many prior to your arrival as Commissioner of the Department of Sanitation, but delays all the same that undermine the worker justice and environmental justice goals that are implemented in this law. The thing that I just want to emphasize is that you have not yet had the opportunity to review the RFP responses. We do not yet know what Carter's have come back to the administration on and what the price point that they're suggesting are.
I've been very clear about that.
I understand. I understand. You have. I just mean to say, we don't know that there are negative cost implications for small businesses. I appreciate your thoughtfulness in trying to mitigate any potential increases, but we have no data at this time to show that small businesses are going to suffer or face additional cost challenges from this law. And I'm confident that the offsets that are built into this law are going to mitigate the increases that would have otherwise been imposed.
What's your confidence based on? Sorry, I'm not supposed to ask you questions.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering.
It's always good to see you, though, Commissioner. I'm happy to continue the conversation, but I don't want to, if the chair will allow.
I mean, if you want to ask a question, because I think you've delivered your point.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez, did you have one final question?
Thank you. My question, Commissioner, is as much as you can share about kind of your initial review of that first set of RFPs. I'm curious, because I know that DSNY can consider histories of bad actors. I'm curious if that, if you've worked in weighing in Carter's who are applying, who have a consistent record of being bad actors. And specifically, there's a different weight for those Carter's who also own transfer stations as well? Because I know the transfer station piece is not baked into the bill. And then lastly is if you can speak on the worker piece, what the agency is doing to promote hiring second chance workers and other, eliminating other barriers to employment under commercial waste zones? Thank you.
Two quick things. First, we, I have not seen any of the proposals. There are two teams working sequentially. The first team was the team that was looking at each of their proposals and doing a very detailed analysis, not to score it, but to make sure that all of the information required under the RFP was submitted as part of the response. So that we didn't want it to get to a place where we were going to have to eliminate potential proposers for silly administrative errors. So that was the first group. They are not supposed to talk to anyone about price. Like, I don't know what's going on with price. The second group of proposers, or the second group is a group that's actually doing the scoring of the proposals. They will look at price. They will make their determinations. But I don't know the outcome of that. I don't know.
But you don't have a sense if the applicants who demonstrated consistent bad behavior, if they will be, if those proposals will be weighed differently? You can't share that yet. That was my question.
Yes. Greg, do you want to go through how that's accounted for in the weighing process? I'm sorry I missed that.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, council member. So as the Commissioner mentioned, you know, these are incredibly voluminous proposals. One of the reasons they are so voluminous is because we've asked for a tremendous amount of compliance history, financial history, and other similar information from each of the proposers. So we are asking the evaluation committee to look at that in detail. We've built some tools to help them understand, you know, how the Carter's compare to each other, how Carter's of different sizes can compare to each other. So certainly, that's something that they're looking at when they're evaluating the overall capacity, operations, and compliance history of those proposers.
And I just want to apologize to you, council member. I completely blanked that you were the chief of staff to then Chair Reynoso. So thank you so much for your efforts in getting us here.
Jen knows what she's talking about.
I know.
Thank you. And also, if I could shout out the DSNY workers of Garage Four. They're doing a great job. I have a video that I want to share with you. They're doing a great job. Thank you.
Please do. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, I certainly didn't mean to shut down Councilmember Wrestler. I share his concerns about an overemphasis on price. I think it will be helpful when we get to that place where you have that information, where we can talk about that. But I think the whole point of this hearing is to understand, what is the communication and messaging strategy that's happening around CWZs, around the CWZ? Because so many people in this room have reached out to DSNY, to us. They're asking the bids. They're asking everybody, what is going on? We don't understand what's happening. And in that communication vacuum, all sorts of imaginations happen, right? And so a narrative that there could be wild price increases, let's avoid that by over-communicating to the business community where we are, which is the point of this hearing, to open up the conversation so that people aren't spiraling in some wild space about this potentially falling apart. So as I mentioned, agree, like, we thank you for holding that, the anxiety of that. And this is an opportunity to air things. But I just want to make sure that Councilmember Wrestler knows that we certainly support his comments. I only have two more questions and then we have a bunch of folks that are testifying. And I'm gonna call up Borough President Antonio to be on deck to testify. Just in terms of, we have commercial organics law in different pieces and hopefully this will complete the, whatever we're saying.
Hackage.
Yeah. It'll fill it up. So we're able to, everybody can do the thing that we all want to be doing. But Councilmember Salamanca's questions made me think again about the questions that we've had about the just residential organics. In terms of our capacities across public and private facilities, do we have enough? Should this CWZ program be, and on top of the residential program, be wildly successful, which we hope it will be, given all of the extensive outreach that's going to be done? Do we feel, do you feel that there is enough capacity, facility capacity, to take all of this stuff and not impact the waste equity laws negatively?
I, for the residential program...
For everything, if everything's up and running.
We'll start with residential. For the residential program, we've done a detailed analysis. We have the capacity. I would like to have other options and opportunities. So we are doing the work now to explore those options and opportunities and potentially put new options and opportunities in place so that by the time we have the full rollout, we can leverage those. Deputy Commissioner Anderson, for the commercial side, can you speak to the chair's questions?
Yeah, absolutely. So as of right now, there is surplus capacity in the system. Some of that surplus capacity will be used up by our wildly successful residential program, which will resume in Queens next month and expand in Brooklyn in the fall. Some of that capacity will be used by the commercial Carter's. As part of the RFP process, we released what's called a request for expressions of interest. And that was specifically aimed at all of the players in the waste transfer, processing, recycling market, asking for capacity that's available in the system now, capacity that may be available in the future, projects that are under development, projects that need financing, and put all of those together in one place so that we could say to the industry, not only here is what is available today, but here is what could be available in the future. As we go through the RFP process, we are going to be, not we, but the evaluation committee, will be looking at the specific proposals, where they're planning to take their refuse, their recycling, their organics. their recycling, their organics, whether or not those facilities exist today or in development, our potential investments in the future, and look at all of those things comprehensively. I think what we have seen over the last five years, 10 years, is tremendous investment in regional capacity for processing organics. That's the basis by which we increased the number of businesses covered by the commercial organics law, and we expect to see additional regional capacity expand in the future.
Okay, thank you. One more question, and then I have to ask one more question, or I know I was going to go crazy. Is DSNY committed to ensuring lower rates for recycling organics, given the removal of the 30% lower rates language in the RFP and it being removed?
Yes, absolutely. And the RFP still requires a lower rate for recycling and composting than refuse. The 30% number was an artificial number. Based on the briefings that I got, it does not seem like there was real analysis used to come up with that number. And I thought that it was an important thing to do to make sure that the recycling and composting prices remain cheaper than refuse pricing, but I didn't want to give an artificial percentage cheaper.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, you didn't comment on the bottle bill, but I do have some questions. The resolution calls for the expansion of the number of containers and increase of the deposit amount. Does DSNY view a modernized bottle bill as a key part of our efforts to move towards zero waste?
I would like to see one thing included in the bottle bill that's not in the existing one and that I haven't seen in the new language for an update to a bottle bill, which is, for our diversion rate, we get no credit for any of those bottles. The city doesn't. And I would like to see a requirement on the redemption centers to report their volumes in some holistic, clear way, so that we can include those efforts as part of our diversion rate. I think that is reasonable. I think it would not be a massive lift for the redemption centers, and frankly, I think it's required. If we're going to talk about amending or updating the bottle bill, that is something that is glaringly missing. And many other cities include those figures in their diversion rates. I don't think it's going to raise the diversion rate by 50% or anything. Don't get me wrong, but it's a meaningful amount of material that's diverted. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing a bottle bill.
So, you're saying you just want more data on it?
I want the redemption centers, where the bottles are brought to, to have to report to the city, to the council. I don't care who they have to report to, but I want data on how many bottles, how much stuff are they diverting?
Okay. Seems reasonable.
Right?
Okay. I think we've got through all the questions we could get through, so that we can make space for people, so they're not here all day. Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Commissioner, thank you. I'm sorry, we didn't hear from you.
First deputy.
First deputy. I'm still learning. I'm sorry. But thank you for your testimony today. I'm gonna call up Brooklyn Borough, actually, I don't have my panel list. Sorry. Let me see if I can find it.
Rebecca's managing the.
Oh, okay.
You can call him.
Yes, so, Antonio, excuse me, Borough President, when you're ready, please join us. And then who?
So, for the first panel, it's Brooklyn Borough President Reynoso, Eric Goldstein, and Justin Wood.
Also, just want to recognize Councilmember Jim Gennaro in the House. Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say hello.
Hello. Thanks for being here.
Apologies. One more addition to the first panel. It'll be Bonicio Crespi.
His last name Crespi here? Okay. We can start when you're ready.
First, I want to say thank you to our Chair of Sanitation, Councilmember Sandy Nurse, for this great hearing, this timely hearing. This is my first time testifying in person in the city council, so it's kind of overwhelming to be on the other side here. But extremely, extremely happy, because I couldn't be prouder of the folks that are sitting up on that day, the questions they asked, and how I feel like one of my legacy projects is in good hands with the council members that are here today, with, again, with the questions that they asked. I had a testimony, but after listening to the Commissioner speak and to the first deputy commissioner speak, I just wanted to address some of the concerns that I had about a couple of things that I was listening to. I think Chair Nurse, when you talked about the narrative related to pricing and the concerns that businesses have, it's absolutely true. Right now, there are folks I have great relationships with in the restaurant industry, in the supermarket industry, are deeply concerned, almost exclusively, related to price. And the messaging and the information that we're getting from this hearing is going to exacerbate, is going to make that worse, is going to make it so that they are going to double down on the fact that they think that this was a mistake to begin with. And it just concerns me, because I think we could have a conversation about costs in a more reasonable way that speaks to our concerns, but allays the fears of the business industry, that we're doing everything possible to not have that be the case. Also, first deputy Commissioner Gregory Anderson practically wrote this legislation alongside our office. I want to be very clear, the reason it's a great piece of legislation is because of the collaborative effort that we had with the Department of Sanitation. We were ready for all of the concerns or errors that could possibly exist. We were ready for that. Everything that we did in that bill was intentional, to keep prices down, to allow for progress in other areas that were completely non-existent. And I want to talk to you about pricing in general. The reason pricing in the city of New York was so low was because there was a race to the bottom. You have to understand that the reason businesses were paying a low amount was because they weren't paying workers. Workers weren't wearing safety vests and had to buy their own safety vests. Workers were getting paid off the books. Workers were dying, and companies weren't acknowledging it. Trucks had no brakes. We have some trucks that were still here from the 1970s, 80s, and 90s, running through our streets. That's why prices were low. This legislation is specifically aimed to start addressing all those issues. And that doesn't come for free. It doesn't. And I'm not saying that costs will go up. I want to be very clear. But everything else we're doing is worth us having a conversation about moving this program as fast as possible. Also, when it comes to minimum wage or minimum pay that we can give these workers, you and this dais would never have a conversation about the minimum wage of a McDonald's worker threatening the burger to go up 25 cents. It just wouldn't. Environmental justice comes at a price, and that's exactly what we were willing to do. We were willing to make that sacrifice. But we implemented certain things within the legislation to protect against that, including competition. We assumed that there would be about 40 to 50 applicants that would be eligible for these zones. There are about 65 zones, but we expected folks like Action Karting, which is an extremely large company that has, on the merits, been doing things right, new trucks, paying workers, giving them safety equipment, allowing for unionization to happen in a responsible way. Those folks can get two, three, four, or five zones. So, we're not expecting one zone per carter. There's going to be competitions within that. We protected against that. We were ready. And then the conversations I'm having internally with folks is that cost is not the biggest concern that folks are having. It's the transition. They need to know what they're going to do right now, so they can start preparing for the future. The trucks that they would need to purchase would take 15, 16 months for them to get, but they can't buy new trucks if they don't know what they're going to be working on or where they're going to be working. So, transition is the biggest concern they have. I want to just, 50% of the trucks off the road is not a light accomplishment. That is significant, significant. It's going to cut significant amounts of air pollution in the South Bronx, North Brooklyn, and Southeast Queens. I kind of want to leave it there, because I would love for you to ask questions and I answer questions that you might think are meaningful, but I just want to get back to justice isn't free. Like, you got to fight for that. And you guys are now talking about legislation to allow for trash to go into the MTSs. That's more expensive than the waste transfer stations. It is. And are you going to sacrifice that bill because you don't want to increase the cost of what it is to go into those MTSs? And I don't think you should. I think you should do what's right. And doing what's right sometimes costs businesses money, even though, again, it's all speculation at this point. Thank you so much for allowing me to testify today.
Thank you so much, former Chair, Borough President. You're holding a lot of knowledge of how this all went down, and so, we really appreciate you being here. And I'm lucky to have Jen over here as well, who was witness to it all upfront. So, we'll hear from the other two, and then we'll have, if folks have questions, we'll bring them up.
Thank you, Chairs, Nurse and Menon, and Borough President, and Councilmember Gutierrez and Gennaro. I'm Eric Goldstein from the Natural Resources Defense Council. The mold-breaking statute that many of the folks in this room helped advance envisions a once-in-a-generation transformation of the system of waste handling in the nation's largest city for commercial waste. And if it's implemented, it will ultimately be viewed as having launched the most significant change in New York's solid waste policy in 30 years. But the law is not self-enforcing, and it's going to continue to take priority attention, both from the department in terms of resources, manpower, and attention, as well as from this committee, these committees, to ensure that the objectives of that landmark statute are met. The current system, just to recap, for commercial waste handling in New York City has, for decades, been completely broken. As the Borough President just said, as many as 90 privately-owned karting companies racing around the city in an irrational, nonsensical routing scheme. Some routes have required as many as 1,000 stops in all five boroughs on one 12-hour shift. Some neighborhoods have had more than two dozen separate carters driving to stores on the very same block. Pedestrians have been endangered. Conditions for day workers have been poor. Private carters have relied on land-based transfer stations located disproportionately in overburdened communities of color. And this dangerous and irrational system has been a long-running nightmare for environmental communities, especially in the South Bronx, North Brooklyn, and Southeast Queens. The system doesn't just need small adjustments, it needs a complete, top-to-bottom remake, and that's exactly what Local Law 199 promises to provide. The advantages are numerous and far-reaching. I detail them in my written testimony, but just one fact illustrates this. According to the 2016 Sanitation Department study itself, reductions of up to 18 million miles a year in reduced commercial diesel truck traffic are expected. That's the equivalent of taking trucks off the road that would travel to the moon and back 36,000, 36 times every year, moon and back. Minimum standards for health, safety, labor, and the environment for the first time. The people in this city deserve nothing less than the reforms envisioned by Local Law 199. Unfortunately, implementation has been delayed. The statute required, among other things, that by September 2020 and annually thereafter, the commission shall issue a report regarding implementation of the commercial waste zone program for each month in the previous year, indicating that the council's intent was that the program be up and running without undue delay. But today, nearly three and a half years after Local Law 199 took effect, actual awarding of contracts for the new waste zone program has yet to take place. To be sure, the COVID-19 epidemic and its aftermath are responsible for much of the delay, and the Commissioner's testimony today provides some assurance that the statute will ultimately be implemented successfully. But time is marching on, and it's essential that final implementation steps advance expeditiously. So, for all these reasons, we support Intro 933, which would establish a commercial waste zone working group. We believe there are ways to modify the composition of the working group to address the Commissioner's legitimate concerns of actual or apparent conflicts of interest. A related reform initiative is rapidly advancing the use of the city's modernized marine transfer stations. These have been discussed as potentials to handle commercial waste going back even before the 2006 Solid Waste Management Plan. It's been two decades in discussion. We've spent a fortune to rebuild those stations. Two of them, as the Commissioner testified, have excess capacity, and we need to find a way to get some commercial waste to those facilities. So, we enthusiastically support 493, which would formally require the department to submit a plan for accepting commercial waste at these marine transfer stations. The department should study the issue and identify ways to encourage and incentivize the use of marine transfer stations, not just wait to sit back and see if the private carters have any interest in using them. Finally, we favor the adoption of Resolution 167. We hope you have another hearing on this issue, because we think just airing these issues in the transparency that the department has shared today is very worthwhile. We encourage you to bring them back in the fall. Thank you for your attention.
Good afternoon. I'm Justin Wood. I'm the Director of Policy at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. We're also a founding member of the Transform Don't Trash New York Coalition, that has been working with so many of the elected officials and advocates and workers here to implement, pass and implement Local Law 199. Thank you very much to Chairs Menon and Nurse, and Councilmembers Gutierrez and Gennaro for hearing our testimony. We'll submit a complete written document. I think especially because the theme of this oversight hearing is the impact on businesses, I just wanted to focus on a few of the things that were touched upon. But in some ways, I don't think these got enough discussion. And one, and thank you Chair Menon for bringing this out, currently, businesses, especially small businesses, completely, in many cases, lack recycling and composting and accessible food donation options. And implementing Local Law 199, commercial waste zones, as robustly and swiftly as possible, is the best way to bring all of that together, so that every business in New York City can be held to the same standard that businesses are held to in so many other cities where their diversion rates, even during the pandemic, just checked the rates yesterday, are double or even triple what we've been doing in New York. And we understand all too well, you know, coming out of this 60, 55-degree, very pleasant winter week, as our state's Climate Council says, waste is 12% more than previously thought of the emissions pie. And it's one that we, as New York City, can do something about. I think the opportunity, and thank you to the Sanitation Department and the mayor for the announcement that curbside composting on the residential side is going to be expanded, this is a huge opportunity to have one set of practices, one set of rules, so that New Yorkers, whether they're a business owner, or just a customer in a business, or someone at home, or in a public space, can figure out, what do I source separate, what gets recycled, and start to build some public faith in the system. Because right now, you can recycle at home, but when you go into too many businesses, you don't know what's going on. And we can see it, actually. We can see and smell what's going on, which is that there's tons of edible food, in many cases, going into black bags for collection at night on the commercial side. So, this is a huge opportunity to create a uniform, common-sense set of recycling practices that all New Yorkers can adopt across public and private sectors. Just a couple of other things. I mean, it's reassuring, as others said, to hear that there's a timeline shaping up for implementation. It's much slower than we would have liked to realize all the benefits of this law. We also need this as expeditiously as possible, I dare say, for folks in the hauling industry, the private sanitation and recycling industry, many of whom are here, because they need certainty to create, to make the investments that are needed in better facilities, all of the recycling capacity, cleaner trucks, safe conditions for workers. They need that certainty to make those investments, and we, as a city, need that to create thousands of good, family-sustaining jobs across the city. So, the longer we delay, the longer we're forestalling much-needed, long-overdue investment in a sustainable waste system. Finally, we strongly support Intro 493, that would begin to create a plan to direct some commercial waste to the marine transportations. Those are a great example of where we've made public investment in better, safer, unionized facilities. And now, we need to fund. for implementation. It's much slower than we would have liked to realize all the benefits of this law. We also need this as expeditiously as possible, I dare say, for folks in the hauling industry, the private sanitation and recycling industry, many of whom are here, because they need certainty to create, to make the investments that are needed in better facilities, all of the recycling capacity, cleaner trucks, safe conditions for workers. They need that certainty to make those investments, and we, as a city, need that to create thousands of good, family-sustaining jobs across the city. So the longer we delay, the longer we're forestalling much-needed, long-overdue investment in a sustainable waste system. Finally, we strongly support Intro 493, that would begin to create a plan to direct some commercial waste to the marine transportations. Those are a great example of where we've made public investment in better, safer, unionized facilities. And now we need to fully utilize them to take additional truck miles off the road in the new CWZ system, and especially bring some relief to the environmental justice communities that get far too much of that truck traffic. Thank you very much. We'll present a full written statement.
Thank you. I have one question, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Gutierrez. And if anyone else has any questions, let me know. And Councilmember Gennaro as well. I guess this is a question for you, Borough President. One of the things we've also heard of so many carters saying, "We don't know what to do. We have heavy equipment, facilities, yards, trucks, compactors. We just have stuff all over the place, and we don't know how this is going to move, and we've received no communication." Based on everything you heard today, what more do you think needs to happen, based on the concerns you're hearing, to assure folks, or give them something that they can move with?
It's concerning. The transition here is my biggest concern. I do want to acknowledge Chair Menon. I'm sorry, I thought it was a sanitation hearing, but it obviously is also a small-business hearing. I want to acknowledge you, and thank you so much for your questions and your thoughtfulness here. It's concerning. I don't know exactly what to do. This delay has put us in a strain. It's a strain on the folks that we expect to carry this load for us, which are these also small businesses in the carding industry. They are, there's investments, there's loans, there's infrastructure that they need to start getting to work on. The longer we take to tell them that they have a contract with the city and allow them to start the process of building, getting capital and building up, that can take another two years, right? So for me, it's just getting to the point where everyone knows. We need, we can't have the pilot program. Everyone's going to know at the same time. And after they all know, we can start the process of allowing them to build up. The longer we take to let them know, the harder it's going to be. Trucks that they bought two years ago might be offline by then. The longer we take, again, it's going to make it harder for them, it's going to delay the whole process. And my biggest concern is, if we delay this process, and there are any hiccups, it's going to give folks on the outside, people that want to shut this down, an opportunity to say, "Hey, they couldn't get it right. They couldn't do it. It's because of these delays, the uncertainty we've left these companies with." That's my biggest concern. And I don't know how to address that outside of giving the contracts out as soon as possible, letting people know who won these RFPs so they can start building.
Yeah, I mean, we left, we asked, you know, is there more capacity you could use or benefit from to bring more people on and blitz these contracts out? And there seems to consistently be, over the last year, the response, "We have what we need." But you have what you need to move at a very slow pace, but there's no creativity in saying, "Actually, if we doubled the amount of people we have reviewing this, we could move this along further." So that's just one thing I want to offer, Councilmember.
Oh, I just want to, first of all, thank the panel for the testimony, because you all were in the trenches doing this work, and, you know, we really, really appreciate it. I want to ask for your assistance on the outreach to small businesses, because my concern, as you saw from my questioning, is that the outreach to the small business community hasn't happened yet. It's an enormous hurdle that we have to overcome, and so I look forward to your feedback and partnership as we make sure that small businesses know what's ahead for them.
Absolutely. We'll be there. And just to finish off, Councilmember Nurse, or Chair Nurse, you mentioned the staffing issue. I think that the Commissioner of Sanitation is being overly cautious, and just being very responsible, like overly responsible, almost to paralyzation, right? Like so careful and so concerned that you don't end up moving anything. And we, in some of these cases, you just need to move on it. And the sky never, I've been, I was doing this for eight years. Before that, I was with Councilmember Dan Arena for eight years. I've been a Borough President for two years. The sky never fell on this city, on any piece of legislation we've ever implemented in that entire timeline. The sky never falls. We're New Yorkers, we're resilient, and this trepidation, this worry, really concerns me. It's like, we are bold, we'll figure it out. And if cost is a concern, we could come back. We can have a conversation. We could amend laws to make sure we fix problems. But this idea that we're just going to keep holding back and being, move as slowly as possible in an effort to be overly careful, I think is hurting us.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chairs. And thank you Borough President for bringing us back, really reminding us why Commercial Waste Zones were important, not just for bringing dignity into our EJ communities, but bringing dignity to workers in this industry, bringing a standard that didn't exist, and certainly transforming an entire industry that remained largely unchecked, certainly needs an investment. So I just want to thank you and uplift that. My question to you is, I also agree with you. I want to be very careful about the way that this council specifically kind of contributes to this narrative about increased cost, because we are moving at a snail's pace, because we are moving with so much trepidation and so much fear. And so I thank you for reminding everybody that this all is an investment to reaching our climate goal, our climate change goals, to uplifting an industry, to creating worker protections and codifying that. My question to you is, the Commissioner said, when I asked her the question about cost and fear of cost increase, she highlighted the fact that we had 34 applicants. Now, to Chair's Nurse's point, that also happened because there were mergers and a lot of bad actors that need not apply, right? So in your opinion, what is, what would have been a creative and responsible way for the department to incentivize more applicants in time? Or what is, in your opinion, a better way, what would have been a better way for them to create a better space for more carters to apply, for them to start gearing up? Because it just felt like her response was like, "Well, we didn't have as many people as we wanted necessarily."
I think the respondents are a reflection of the type of companies in the city that are capable of doing this work to the standards that we expect. We want to get as close as possible of standards of the Department of Sanitation. The workers working in action should be getting paid, should be getting the same equipment, the same standards that the Department of Sanitation gets. And the people, the 34 applicants, are the only ones that could get to achieving that. So the smaller number should not be something that scares us. What we're doing is empowering and giving contracts out to folks that get it. So it is not a concern for me. Also, there's a rate cap on all this as well. We can only charge so much. They can't go past a certain limit. So worst-case scenario, they get to the max at the rate cap. So it's just like, these concerns, it's just, I don't understand it. The worst-case scenario is the max of the rate cap. And if that is the worst-case scenario, and you think it's too high, then let's talk about that. If not, the rate cap is perfectly fine, then let's move forward with it. So again, I think having less is not a problem. We're going to have better people here, not worse. So I'm really excited about it.
I love all of that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and the rate cap went up already, so it's not like people were, you know, we didn't have a big backlash to that, right? So, yeah, I think we're all in agreement, and I wanted to just double down on your point, that we do have companies here who are large companies, who have years of experience doing the right thing, that are allowed to get up to 15, you know, areas. So this is not like we are in a dearth, you know, we're happy that some folks are out. So I hope we can all collaborate on a better narrative and a citywide public awareness campaign, tapping into all the ways we're communicating to talk about how transformative this is going to be, and from the worker's angle, from the environmental angle, from our air quality and our quality of life, and just the safety of people on the streets at night. I cut out all the gruesome details, because I was like, I don't want to go hard on that. But, I mean, that was real pain people felt. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to holding DSMY accountable to that kind of work, and if they're not able to do that type of public awareness campaign, I think there's a lot of actors here who can do that work. Councilmember Gennaro?
Thank you, Chair Nurse, and it's good to be here with you, Chair Menon, as well. I wish to be associated with the remarks of this good panel. I had the privilege of serving in the council with the Borough President when he was Chair of this committee, and he served with great distinction and in his capacity as Borough President. He's really doing amazing things, and I appreciate that. And New York lawyers, where would we be without the New York lawyers who've been involved in this issue for so long? And Eric Goldstein and I were together at the All Night Solid Waste Management Plan Hearing in 1992. I think it was like August or something. We don't have hearings in the, whatever, but the plan had to get done, and it started at like 7:00 in the evening and like ended at like 5:00 in the morning, and Steve DeBrienz yelling at Stan Michaels. So this is, my point is that, you know, Eric has been, you know, laboring in the vineyard of these issues for so many years, and is, has done more than really anyone I know to, you know, put a crystal in focus on. It's been a pleasure to work with him. I'm adding my name as a sponsor. I would ask the council committee to sign me on to 933, and I pledge to support my chair in any way that I possibly can, and look forward to many more hearings like this. And I promise to show up on time next time, but I have a good reason for being late if anybody wants to hear it, which you don't. But really privileged to be here and to, you know, bear witness to the great testimony that this panel has provided. Thank you for that. There you have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gennaro. Thank you, panelists, for being here. Appreciate your time, and we will be calling up the next panel.
So the second panel will be Bonacio Cressby, Eric McClure, Aliyah Sumro, and Dior St. Bonacio, you can begin.
One, two? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Bonacio Cressby, Secretary Treasurer of Local Law 13. We have been strong supporters of the Commercial Waste Zone since the very beginning. We support worker satisfaction, safety, and favor of sensible routing. Before my post, I worked as a private carter for 24 years. I could personally see the positive impact that these bills will have for this city, citizens, and its workers. Antonio Reynoso was absolutely correct with the expense of using the marine, the marine transfer station. It's true. But the marine transfer station usage would change the landscape for a driver who works in this city. Instead of dumping a load in the outer boroughs or even in New Jersey, there would be 15 to 20 minutes to a dump. It would address a number of problems, including distribution of garbage, environmental, fuel, safety, and including the driver's stress. I personally hope that these contractors are in favor of unionized labor, so we can have decent wages and a standard across this city for all its workers. I'm keeping it short.
Well, thank you so much. You have a little more time if you want, but thank you so much for your testimony.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Aliyah Sumro, and I'm the Deputy Director for New York City Policy at the New York League of Conservation Voters. Thank you, Chair Nurse, Chair Menon, and members of the Committees on Small Business and Sanitation and Waste. I have submitted longer written testimony. NYLCV strongly supports the passage of Local Law 199, establishing the city's first Commercial Waste Zones Program. Championed by a wide group of stakeholders, this law will overhaul the city's antiquated and inefficient commercial waste management system by dividing the city into 20 zones, limiting each zone to a maximum of three private sanitation companies selected through a competitive bid process. However, we're still waiting for the law's full implementation. While we understand the importance of starting off on the right foot and learning from other cities' attempts at overholing its waste system, it is imperative that the city carries out this law in a timely manner. We urge the city to dedicate the requisite amount of resources and funding for staffing, education, and outreach to fully implement the Commercial Waste Zone Law. If implemented effectively, this law could bring us closer to New York City's zero-waste goals, improve air quality, curb the city's tailpipe pollution and carbon emissions, cut down on traffic congestion, and improve the safety of workers, pedestrians, and cyclists. With this in mind, NYLCV supports Intro 493 and Intro, what was that, 493. We believe both of these bills will help implement the Commercial Waste Zone Law, make it a more transparent process. Together, as the city works toward implementing this law, we must also seize the opportunity to require a transition to zero-emission vehicles for commercial sanitation trucks and ensure that adequate charging infrastructure is installed over the coming years by working with utilities. And lastly, the city must continue working towards reducing the amount of waste we produce in the first place by prioritizing our long-established zero-waste goals. NYLCV supports Intro 493 and 933 and looks forward to working with the City Council and the administration as we implement this law. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Nurse. Nice to see you and nice to be here in the chambers. My name is Eric McClure. I'm the Executive Director of Streets PAC. We're a political action committee and advocacy organization and a proud member of the Transform Don't Trash Coalition. Nearly four years ago in June of 2019, we testified in these chambers before this committee, then chaired by Brooklyn Borough President Reynoso, in support of Intro 1574, the bill that later that year would become Local Law 199, requiring the establishment of a Commercial Waste Zone Program in New York City. Three years and three months since it became law, as we sit here today, the Commercial Waste Zone Program has yet to be implemented. Everything we said in that testimony in 2019 remains true today. The Commercial Waste Zone Program will lead to a huge reduction in vehicle miles traveled by commercial haulers, reducing overall VMT by approximately 50% versus the current free-for-all, and equating to an annual reduction of many millions of vehicle miles traveled. That is critically important to us as advocates for safer streets, since drivers of commercial waste vehicles have struck and killed dozens of people across New York City over the past decade. The existing system, if one can even call it that, in which different carding companies drive haphazard routes that can crisscross the entire city, lead to some of the most dangerous driving behaviors one can imagine. Blatant running of red lights, driving against the direction of traffic, reversing through intersections, and reckless speeding. Anyone who's walked a street late at night in New York City has witnessed this firsthand. The Commercial Waste Zone Program's large reduction in vehicle miles traveled will also have important benefits beyond improved safety. Reduced VMT will mean better air quality and lower greenhouse gas emissions, and the more streamlined routing of trucks will lead to reduced noise levels. Crucially, worker safety will also be optimized under its own system. There are additional substantial and meaningful benefits as well. For all these reasons, we support Intro 933, which would introduce a Commercial Waste Zone Working Group to advise on the program's implementation, but only if the creation of such a working group will push the process forward, and rapidly so. While acknowledging the many challenges caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, it's been nearly four years since Local Law 199 was established, and it's time to put it into action. Lastly, we also support Intro 493, requiring the Department of Sanitation to establish a plan for accepting commercial solid waste at city-owned marine transfer stations. We believe there is excess capacity at the city's marine transfer stations, and allowing the processing of commercial waste at these facilities would further reduce the number of miles driven by commercial waste vehicles, especially in environmental justice communities, rendering all the benefits inherent in reduced truck traffic. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I just want to say thank you to Chair Nurse and also to Chair Menon. Before I give my testimony, I just want to just say thank you to all the councilmembers and everybody that kind of redirected the conversation back to the waste equity issues and environmental justice issues that this bill was actually born out of. I think that it's really important to consider the bottom line for businesses and expenses, but there was a greater public benefit for actually implementing these waste zones, so I just appreciate everybody for bringing it back to that. But good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Dior St. Hilaire, and I'm the founder of Greenfein, an educational consulting firm, using hip-hop to promote wellness through environmental sustainability. As a Bronx-based worker-owned cooperative through Greenfein Organics, we collect and process organic waste locally. Our model is particularly designed to encourage local systems, because we see the value in limiting the export of our waste, not only for our environmental and economic benefit, but for the recipients of our waste that are also other environmental justice communities. As a co-director of BK RIT, which is New York City's first community-supported bike-powered microhauling and composting service, I'm able to witness the impact these policies have on our model and how they make us vulnerable at times that undermine our ability to work together in order to create a more sustainable organics diversion system within the city. So we're in support of Intro 493 as well as Intro 933, because we see the positive impact this can have directly on small businesses. As a microhauler and longtime advocate for this system, we're at a critical point where certain haulers within the industry have shown their willingness to invest in microhaulers and the infrastructure that's necessary to create a better system that works for all. But in order to work together for a cleaner and greener city, we need a clear plan forward. However, with a delay of the implementation of Commercial However, with a delay of the implementation of commercial waste zones, we're all stalled with no clear direction on how to grow our small business operations. Currently, as a forefront fellow with the Urban Design Forum, my team specifically focuses on studying commercial organics and understanding what will be necessary for small business owners to fully participate in this model citywide. So we believe that once New Yorkers can make the clear connection between diverting scraps and decreasing the rodent population, we can more successfully get residents and businesses to align their waste handling practices of the organic stream. However, without clear investment from city and state agencies, what we face is a disposable culture leaving residents confused, frustrated, and disconnected from the larger purpose. So supporting food donation efforts along with local diversion goals where feasible, every business has the opportunity to be educated by microhaulers. These contracts of outreach should prioritize MWBE businesses, worker-owned cooperatives, microhaulers, and community-based organizations. Unfortunately, enforcement is not active, and we constantly see how participants are still falling short of the outlined diversion standards and goals. And as New Yorkers, we deserve access to clean air, a clean environment, meaningful and safe jobs, amongst a host of other things. So Resolution 0167 also has our support, as we believe in the local work canners do to contribute to reimagining our current waste system. So our workers' microhaulers go far beyond simply collecting commercial organic waste. We are the community development programs that we speak of. We are the residents that are part of this local economic system. We encapsulate the future of local waste practices that center workers, equity, and the environment in all that we do. So the networks are here, and we must honor these relationships, the innovators, and the creatives, who have already started the work while figuring out how to scale and allow access for others to get involved. So I will leave you with this final rhyme, because I wouldn't be Green Fiend if we didn't do it. So now we wait just to understand how moving of organics is the master plan. Businesses and residents just alike need very clear direction, one message alike. Not three, or four, or even five, decrease the contamination for the soil to thrive, not landfill or incinerate. Compost is more than descent to great. We bring communities to the conversation, actively inspiring their participation. So CWZ, let's get a plan for the future of us all on this stolen land. Thank you.
Yeah. That's a first for me. Thank you. Well, I'm the only one left. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate you all.
Guilford, you can begin.
My name is Guilford Lovell. I'm a Local 108 member and currently work for Action Carting. I'm here today to testify on the importance of ensuring our city's sanitation program provides long-lasting careers for New Yorkers. I'm a graduate of the Pathways to Apprenticeship Sanitation Program. This workforce development program recruits, trains, and places justice-affected individuals into unionized private waste employers. I am a testament of how people's lives are impacted by a good union job. My job opportunities were scarce, and many led to low-wage, dangerous jobs. But P2A gave me a chance, and now I'm a Local 108 member, working in one of the most important industries in our city. This is why it is important to make sure commercial waste zones are implemented successfully. We need to make sure workers are at the forefront of the process, and we create high-paying jobs. I support the Commercial Waste Zone Working Group and hope together we can make a real difference. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to testify.
Good afternoon. My name is Latoya Washington. I'm the Project Coordinator for Pathways to Apprenticeship Sanitation. We are a workforce development program that recruits, trains, and places justice-affected individuals into unionized employers in the private sanitation industry. We are committed to training the next generation of sanitation workers. Sanitation workers protect our communities, public's health. We are the essential frontline workforce that allows our city to thrive. It is in our collective interest that we continue to promote job quality in our sanitation system, improve conditions, and train the next generation of sanitation workers. P2A Sanitation has partnered with CEO Employment Opportunities, I mean Center of Employment Opportunities CEO, the largest reentry employment provider in the country, Labor's Local 108, a local union that represents workers in the private collection and recycling industry, and with private waste haulers like Action Carter and Philco to change the way we do training in the waste industry. P2A works directly with CEO participants and has tailored the program to best suit not only the needs of participants, but the industry as a whole. We are preparing the workforce needed to make Commercial Waste Zones a success. It is for these reasons we strongly support the Commercial Waste Zone Working Group. We all have an interest in making sure CWZ is implemented effectively in order to meet the initial goals of the program. The industry as a whole is preparing to assist the city and making sure CWZ is a success. We cannot fully prepare the best way possible without a full transparency and an open communication from the city. This working group will ensure that there is communication and accountability between all stakeholders. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with our partners and city officials to ensure CWZ is implemented the right way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. I appreciate you being here. I'm a big fan of Pathways to Apprenticeship program, and we think good unionized jobs where safety is prioritized, where the safety of all the workers inside the facilities, on the trucks, operating heavy equipment, anybody exposed to chemicals, anything like that, folks even in C and D facilities, all sorts of things are coming out of these buildings. We want to make sure you all are protected and that your right to organize for your improved working conditions is protected as well. So thank you for being here and testifying, and thank you for being a part of the process. Thank you so much.
Our fourth panel will be Ryan Thorson-Carson, Ryan Castalia, and Renee Del Carmen.
Thank you so much, Chair Nurse. Very much appreciate the opportunity to testify today. My name is Ryan Thorson-Carson. I'm the Environmental Campaign Coordinator for NIPRG, the New York Public Interest Research Group. We appreciate the opportunity to testify before the New York City Council on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management and on the real solutions to the city's solid waste crisis. So I've had the privilege for the past year and a half to coordinate the Bottle Bill Forty Coalition, which is a coalition of over 300 organizations working to modernize the state's bottle bill. And, you know, we are really, really excited, and we think that this is going to be the year that we get this incredibly needed piece of legislation done. So I'm just going to give a very quick overview on some of the big reasons why this is incredibly necessary to New York City. So 2023 is the 40th anniversary of the initial implementation of the state's Returnable Container Act, affectionably known as the Bottle Bill. It's enacted in 1982, and the Bottle Bill requires a five-cent refundable deposit on eligible beverage containers. The law requires retailers who sell covered beverages to accept returns of empty containers for the products that they sell and to refund the deposits. The law also requires beverage distributors to compensate retailers for the cost of collecting and recycling empty containers by paying them a small handling fee per container. After its four decades of success, it's time for New York to modernize the Bottle Bill and expand the law to include popular non-carbonated beverages, wine, spirits, and hard cider, and increasing the redeemable deposit value to 10 cents to increase the rate of recovery. So New York City would see some immediate environmental, economic, and equity benefits from increased collection of redeemed containers. And my written testimony will kind of go into some of the facts and figures of this, but just kind of hitting the broad points here. There would be less trash for the city to collect, transport, and dispose of. So from an environmental standpoint, expanding the number of containers included in the Bottle Bill would very likely increase the recycling rates of these containers, relieve MRFs from a portion of low-value and difficult-to-manage material, and would provide an opportunity for additional container glass to make its way through the redemption system, where it has a much higher likelihood of being used in new container manufacturing and other higher-use recycling outlets. Just hitting the last two main points here, economically struggling New Yorkers would get an income boost. Very excited to always testify with the fine folks of Sure We Can, who are such a necessary part of this movement. And these folks are a critical part of our recycling infrastructure, and they really need a raise. I think we can all agree on that. New York State's Environmental Protection Fund also would see increased revenues, and this could provide for more of the city's recycling environmental programs. As the state receives 80% of the unredeemed deposits, that money would go up. That money could then be reinvested into critical projects here in the city. And we are really, really excited about this resolution. We very much urge the City Council to pass this resolution. We're really excited to get this thing done this year. We think that it's a very critical part of any extended producer responsibility program, and it looks like this year is going to be the year that a extended producer responsibility program gets done. Bottle Bill is incredibly necessary in that program. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you.
Thank you so much to Chair Nurse and the Council for making the space to discuss the critical issue of expanding the Bottle Bill. I'm Executive Director of Sure We Can, New York's only nonprofit dedicated to serving canners, the folks who collect and redeem the bottles and cans others discard in order to earn income. My name's Ryan Castalia. This expansion is critical in several respects. It's critical for our city and state to fulfill their commitments to waste reduction. It's critical for the livelihoods of thousands of essential workers who are cleaning up after New Yorkers with little to no recognition or support. And it's critical for our communities, which are regularly overburdened by street litter and pollution. In addition to the environmental outcomes that Ryan mentioned, I also want to just pinpoint that the Bottle Bill is a powerful vehicle for environmental justice. Most New York City canners come from highly stigmatized groups, including non-English speakers, new immigrants, those experiencing physical or mental disabilities or homelessness, and the elderly. Most live in the huge swaths of the city designated as environmental justice areas, including our home neighborhoods in East Williamsburg and Bushwick. The Bottle Bill allows people who experience barriers to working to dedicate their labor -- I'm sorry -- who experience barriers to working to dedicate their labor to bettering their communities through recycling while also supporting themselves and their families. The Bottle Bill also supports job creation and small businesses through the handling fee by making it possible for ordinary New Yorkers to start their own redemption centers. Sure We Can was founded by canners who at the time were experiencing homelessness and took that step to empower themselves and their community. In 2022, we redeemed over 12 million bottles and cans and distributed around $750,000 into this underserved community, and we'd be very happy to share those figures with the Department of Sanitation if they'd like to get in touch with us to ask. The Bottle Bill, as Ryan mentioned, is woefully out of date, and it's being neglected by the state. And with these common sense expansions, we'd see immediately huge transformations in our diversion rates and the dignity and livelihoods of this underserved community. Today, in New York City, barely a week goes by in which we don't hear about a redemption center closing because it can't pay rent, making access harder for all New Yorkers and further hampering the system overall. So in addition to the state having -- of course, it's a state law, and the state has an important role to play, but the city can play a role as well. It can declare its -- I'm sorry. It can declare its support for expansion, which I hope it will, but it can also lead the charge by demonstrating its effective implementation, by introducing real systemic support for the redemption system, including investment in infrastructure like new redemption centers, or keeping the existing ones open and active, as well as providing resources, recognition, and support to the marginalized workers that produce the system's incomparable results. New York City can do what it's always done, blaze a trail for others to follow, and this time into a more sustainable future for all. Thank you.
I speak in Spanish. Later, Ryan, can I help you with translation? Thank you. My name is Manuel Renee Del Carmen. Trabajo en Short Weekend desde el 2014. Short Weekend lo conozco desde que se fundó. Antes fui reciclador. Comencé a reciclar por necesidad. Me encontré en una situación vulnerable y me di obligado pues a la necesidad de reciclar. Reciclando me ayudó a conocer, a auxiliarme, y a aprender más de nuestra sociedad, también a solventar mis necesidades económicas. Trabajé como reciclador en Manhattan durante siete años. Hoy estoy manejando todo el espacio y el sistema del reciclaje en la organización Short Weekend. El trabajo de reciclar me dio esfuerzo para ayudar a nuestro medio ambiente, a la misma vez de solventar mis gastos de renta, alimentación, y otros trabajos. Trabajar me empujó a restablecer mi mentalidad de confusiones emocionales. Me sirve como terapia y de entender mejor la situación en la que vivimos. Cuando yo reciclé en las calles, me sirvió los cinco centavos por unidad. Entonces hoy con diez centavos se puede salvar a personas con situaciones más difíciles y también problemas de basura y de animar a las personas con la mejor intención de reciclar y ayudar a nuestro medio ambiente para dejar buena herencia a las nuevas generaciones que se aproximan y así ayudar a nuestro planeta. Gracias.
I'm just translating for Renee. My name is Renee Del Carmen. I've worked at Sure We Can since 2014. I became aware of Sure We Can when it was founded, back when I was a recycler. I started recycling out of necessity, and I found myself in a vulnerable situation that obligated me to do that work. Recycling helped me come to know how to help myself and learn more about our society. It also helped me meet my economic needs. I worked as a recycler in Manhattan for seven years, and today I'm managing the whole space and recycling system at the Sure We Can organization. The work of recycling gave me strength to help our environment and, at the same time, to meet my daily needs and costs like rent, food, and supplies. Mentally, it pushed me to stabilize my mind and support my mental health. It served me like therapy and helped me understand better the situation in which we all live. Before, the five-cent deposit was enough to motivate and support the work, but it's not today. Now, with a 10-cent deposit, the system can save and support people in more difficult situations, and it can also help solve the problems of the world at large regarding waste. It can inspire people to recycle better, to help our environment and world, and leave a better heritage for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a question because your data was so great. Is this something you all keep track of every year?
Yes, absolutely. We have redemption figures, amounts we distribute, amounts we redeem. We can produce all sorts of data. Very happy to interface with the city on that.
And from your experience, do you know if this is common practice across different centers?
We don't know. I think it varies from center to center, for sure. There's no, like, regular way of tracking this data. But I think it's also a capacity issue, and many centers don't have the staff or the resources to do that kind of tracking.
Okay. I just want to say thank you all for being here. It's nice to meet you in person. I think you've testified a couple times on Zoom, so.
Yeah, I'm usually up there, but it's nice to actually be back in the chamber.
Welcome to the chamber again. Thank you all for being here. I think the canning community is just -- you know, Sure We Can is one of my favorite places. It's not fully in my district, but I really appreciate how much work the canning community does for our environment. I think so much of it is so underreported, and the story about how much work you actually do is underreported. So it would be great to be able to capture that across the city, to show the value of the work that's being done, and potentially leverage that in a way to offset some of the other costs that you all are incurring and spending a lot of capacity, having to find other ways to supplement just the cost of a major operation, so.
I will say that we recently received some foundation funding to begin doing this type of data gathering citywide. Where are the canners? What type of work are they doing? What volume are they redeeming? From where, et cetera? But support from the city for this type of work would allow us to greatly expand the scope and really get some concrete data on this community that, as you say, is doing this essential work basically invisibly.
Right. And most, the majority of the workers within the canning community are on foot, right?
Yes.
Right, so fossil fuel-free. Okay, well, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it. Gracias, Renee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next panel will be Martin Narro and Conrad Cutler.
My name is Conrad Cutler. My name is Conrad Cutler, and I'm the founder and president of Mega Beverage Redemption Center. At our single facility, our operation is responsible for redeeming in excess of 3 million empty bottles and cans every single week. In other terms, that translates into 125,000 tons of PET, aluminum, and glass annually, which is diverted from New York's rivers, streams, oceans, parks, and landfills. We also employ 150 full-time employees, and the redemption industry at large is responsible for over 7,000 jobs in the metro-New York area alone. It is an undisputed fact that the New York Bottle Bill is the single most effective piece of environmental legislation to be passed that remains in effect today. Aside from the enormously positive environmental impact the Bottle Bill has, the peripheral economic benefits to both the residents as well as the local and state government of New York are tremendous. New York, are tremendous. In 2020, 5.5 billion empty bottles and cans were both redeemed and recycled in New York State. On top of that, the underdeemed bottle deposits also brought in over $128 million in revenue to the state's general fund. New York State keeps 80% of the unclaimed deposits. There are an estimated 10,000 New York City residents alone that collect bottle and cans for a living. These are families and individuals that earn upwards of $30 an hour cleaning the streets of New York City at no labor or disposal cost to the taxpayers. The bottle bill also produces millions of dollars of annual savings to the city of New York, which hasn't been touched on. In non-bottle bill states, municipal recycling systems bear the burden of disposal for empty beverage containers. In the city of New York, all of the bottle and cans that are being redeemed are not running through the Department of Sanitation Municipal Recycling System. This results in fewer garbage trucks congesting New York City's streets and a lower processing and disposal cost as well. However, the benefits of this will only be recognized if the bottle bill will be updated. The bottle must be modernized to increase the deposit from five to 10 cents and expand the bottle bill to include all beverage containers. I'll finish quickly. According to Sims Municipal Recycling, who has a long-term contract with the New York City Department of Sanitation to process and market the city's recyclables, glass has a negative value of negative $35 to negative $55 per ton, and glass oftentimes contaminates the recycling stream. Unfortunately, glass entering the municipal recycling stream very infrequently doesn't get recycled. The bottle bill is the only recycling program where 100% of the input into the system actually gets 100% recycled. Therefore, an expanded bottle bill would divert much of the glass away from the curbside system and result in tremendous savings for the municipality. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Excellent. Well, Sandy, thank you so much for being here with us today. I know it's been a while since this has started, so we appreciate you hanging on. My name is Martin Narro. I'm the president of the Empire State Redemption Association. We are a group that represents over 125 redemption centers across New York State. Many of those redemption centers service citizens right here in the Five Boroughs, and the statements I'm about to give, they fully support. First off, the 125 redemption centers approximately employ over 20,000 people across New York State and service hundreds of thousands of people on an annual basis that rely on the deposit return system. In unison, we could all say we fully support an expanded bottle bill. An expanded bottle bill will increase the deposit from five cents to 10 cents, increase the containers covered to cover juices, wines, liquors, coffees, and other beverages, and it would also increase the handling fee from three and a half cents to six cents. This is essential for a circular economy and a sustainable future. The bottle bill makes sense for many reasons. The science is very clear in the fact that the bottle bill is four times more likely to recycle bottles and cans than curbside recycling programs. Also, according to the Container Recycling Institute, plastic aluminum glass recycled through redemption systems are 40% more likely to be made back into consumer goods. That's because the contamination rates are much lower. The system is simply cleaner and better for using this material for recycled goods. Additionally, as Sure We Can has stated before, there are, in New York alone, in New York City alone, tens of thousands of people that rely on the bottle bill to supplement their income, to pay for medicine, to pay for their rent, to pay for their everyday needs. The bill hasn't been updated since 2009, and we are entitled. We are asking the city to help us raise the deposit so that they can sustain their lifestyle and help fuel the city's circular economy. My final point is that with an expanded bottle bill, New York would estimate -- would approximately see around $250 million in funding. This is something that the city could tap into and fuel additional programs. And my final point is that some opposition that you'll hear is that many convenience stores, supermarkets, and bodegas simply do not want to take back the wine and liquor bottles. They do not want to take back the additional containers that will be covered. I speak for all redemption centers when I say we have the infrastructure to accept back these containers, and in the legislation, it states that these convenience stores and bodegas could contract with redemption centers so that they do not have to take the material back.
At no cost.
At no cost. Those are my final statements, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
No, thank you for that. I think it's worth highlighting that you mentioned all of these workers are doing this work not just supplemental. This is their income, are sustaining entire families, putting people through school on this income at no additional burden to the city. But there are some downsides to that. For example, if somebody is sick, if somebody can't work or is injured, they don't have some of the safety net because a lot of these workers don't have barriers to accessing the social safety net. So, it would be interesting, I think, to have maybe a follow-up conversation or a hearing on how we could actually be supporting these workers through more benefits for the work that they do that can tap into some of that revenue that would potentially come in through an expanded, bigger, better bottle bill, plus the EPR program that we hope to see happen at the state level. So, you know, centers that have the infrastructure and maybe are working to expand, maybe part of the conversation should be what more can we do to support these workers who are pretty much at the mercy of, you know, whatever's in these bins? We want to make sure that folks are covered in a better way as a long-term thing.
I know Sure We Can has done a really good job at outreach with their canning community and providing peripheral services to them to support them in their everyday life, aside from just paying them for their bills, so.
And we'd be more than happy to work with the City Council to help legitimize the canning community. I believe that there's a tremendous amount that we can do, and we could learn from other countries and states on how they've done that.
Excellent. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
The next panel is Lou DeBuch and Ryan Monell. If there are any individuals who are in person who signed up who we've missed, feel free to come to the speak seats now.
No one else for in-person? Just want to make sure because next is virtual. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Lou DeBuch, and I'm the Vice President for the Northeast for the National Waste and Recycling Association. NWRA represents a private sector waste and recycling services industry. Association members conduct business in New York City and all 50 states and include companies that manage waste collection, recycling, medical waste, equipment manufacturers and distributors, and a variety of other service providers. NWRA represent the hard-working men and women of the industry who collect and manage the waste recyclables and organics produced by the more than 100,000 commercial entities in this great city. I'd like to thank Chairperson Nurse and the rest of the Sanitation and Solid Waste Committee for the opportunity to speak here today. NWRA and our members are concerned that there's been little information provided before today by the Department of Sanitation over the last few months as to why we -- when we can anticipate the beginning of the implementation process for New York City's commercial waste zone. During the three years it took to get to this point where haulers are currently waiting to see who's selected to serve the many businesses in New York City, NWRA feels the entire process has lost the collaboration that existed during the commercial waste zones conceptual stage. We want to reiterate that nowhere in the U.S. has such a zoning program been adopted or implemented to this scale or structure. We fully understand that this is an unprecedented and complex process. Our members share New York City's goals of promoting a modern and effective industry that is not just focused on providing its core services, but is refocused on sustainability, zero-waste, emissions reductions, and fair labor practices. But we also believe that the implementation of such a significant and potentially confusing transition to commercial waste franchise systems requires a measured, thoughtful, and collaborative implementation process. That is why we are very pleased that Chairperson Nurse introduced legislation to create the Commercial Waste Zone Working Group. As we just stated, the city's transition from open market to a commercial waste zone will be an historic, complicated undertaking that's going to take many years to fully implement. The sooner we can begin the process of putting a working group together, the better. The success of this entire process will be based not only selecting the right awardees, but also the partnership between all stakeholders and DSNY. That cooperation, if properly aligned, can have a significant impact on the success of the entire process. So, we're here today to encourage DSNY to announce the franchise awardees as soon as possible and then engage with the Commercial Waste Zone Working Group once it's created in a deliberative, collaborative process, ensure a successful implementation of the commercial waste zone system. Thank you for the opportunity today.
Hi, I'm Andy Moss from Waste Connections, and I want to thank Chair Nurse for holding today's hearing. New York City Waste Connections proudly serves thousands of commercial customers with excellent customer service. We employ 218 hard-working men and women, including 158 union members, the great majority who live in New York City. As a company strongly committed to both safety and sustainability, Waste Connections is here today in support of legislation that will create a working group for the newly-formed commercial waste zones. In our view, a working group can play a critical role in helping to address the challenges associated with replacing the current waste collection system with an entirely new process. We believe that an experienced and qualified committee can play a crucial role in making the transition process a smooth one and help avoid the pitfalls that Los Angeles experienced with many reported service complaints during its first six months of a similar transition. Commercial waste and recycling management is complex and multifaceted. It requires the collaboration and cooperation of multiple stakeholders, including businesses, waste and recycling companies, micro haulers, and local government. A working group focusing on commercial waste zones can help bring these stakeholders together and facilitate the development of a more coordinated and effective waste management system. By working together, stakeholders can identify and address the unique challenges associated with entirely new system. Specifically, there bound to be issues associated with introducing a new service provider, the city's requirement that every company have a written contract, new recycling opportunities, and payment issues. Moreover, once the initial transition is complete and the system has reached a sense of equilibrium, a working group can help to identify opportunities for innovation and improvement, such as enhanced worker safety, the development of new waste reduction technologies, the implementation of sustainable waste management practices, and the promotion of waste reduction and recycling programs. Lastly, I would say that the Business Integrity Commission that currently regulates the waste and recycling industry has a trade waste advisory board. Its minutes are public and works very well.
Thank you. Is that a suggestion for something? I guess I did have a question. You know, the commissioner testified, having Carter's on the working group, given the timeline that they're hinting at in terms of getting to three years. So, having a working group up and running sooner would prevent them, based on her testimony, from being in there. What would be some alternative types of -- right now, as it's written, we have environmental justice advocates, environmental leaders, kind of like from the advocate side, from the industry side?
An association that represents all the haulers that are in the city, like NWRA, could be on that would be.
And you think that would be adequately firewalled to prevent favoritism?
Absolutely. It would represent all our members, so.
My understanding was that the legislation didn't take effect until all the contracts were awarded.
Yeah, that's mine as well, so that's why I was surprised to hear it say it. But I, you know, we can talk more with the administration to see what kind of pitfalls or blocks that would be needing to be in place versus suggested.
I mean, again, the Business Integrity Commission has a similar group that works very well and is public.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your testimony today.
Thank you.
We'll now move to Zoom testimony. Matthew Savello, Anna Sax, Rhonda Kaiser, Kathleen Riley, Elizabeth Balkin, Elizabeth Adams, and Jane Selden. And Matthew, you can begin when the sergeant calls time. Time has begun.
Thank you. I'm Matthew Savello, and I serve as Chair of the Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board, and I am pleased to provide this testimony on behalf of the Brooklyn Manhattan and Bronx Solid Waste Advisory Boards. The implementation of local law 199 is long overdue, having been signed into the law over three years ago, and we believe that in implementing the commercial waste zone law, four key aspects should be prioritized. First, ensuring fair competition in each commercial waste zone area to avoid effective monopolies and the origins of most, if not all, of the much-discussed pricing concerns at today's hearing. The encouragement of subcontracting to facilitate the inclusion of smaller local haulers, including micro haulers and local processing facilities, thereby retaining as much value as possible within the city. Thirdly, completing adequate outreach, education, and enforcement directed at businesses to ensure compliance and encourage an immediate boost in diversion rates. And fourth, establishing a robust methodology for collection and public distribution of data from and to all stakeholders. We believe that it's important that ongoing evaluation of the commercial waste zones, including metrics such as consumer pricing, truck miles, and diversion rates, as well as worker safety. As such, we support Intro 933, which would mandate the creation of a commercial waste -- of a commercial waste zones working group to engage in this evaluation. We support Intro 493, mandating a plan to move towards processing of commercial solid waste at the marine transfer stations. The city's marine transfer stations are crucial in reducing truck miles associated with managing the city's waste, and their spare capacity should be used for processing commercial waste. Furthermore, if the city is serious about its zero-waste goals, the extra capacity should not be required for additional municipal solid waste. Cost-effectiveness has been cited as a barrier to commercial haulers looking to use the marine transfer stations. As such, the suggestion of subsidizing tipping fees has merit, as would any other economic levers available to the department. We would also suggest the inclusion of a clause related to targeting specific areas of the city from which to accept commercial waste in order to further reduce truck traffic in certain overburdened communities. Intro 493 contains no targets for dates or tonnages, and is open-ended. As a result, the setting of reasonable staggered targets would help to accelerate the transition. Finally, the Bigger Better Bottle Bill. S237 stands as part of the ongoing state-level packaging reduction bills package, which the swabs have been engaged in. The current bottle law is long overdue, as an update, both in the variety of materials and the size of the deposits. The proposed changes stand to enhance residential and commercial diversion rates through the inclusion of wine and liquor bottles, containers that present a problem when mingled with municipal recycling streams. The boost in the deposit amount will encourage consumer return of these materials, and the increase in the handling fee will help struggling redemption centers. The swabs, therefore, support this resolution in the interest of continued increase in diversion rates and decreased roadside litter for containers covered under the spill. Solid Waste Advisory Boards look forward to seeing the amendments to these bills and continuing to work with the city's department and elected officials to move forward toward zero waste. On behalf of Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Bronx Solid Waste Advisory Boards, I want to reiterate our thanks for your consideration and attention regarding these matters today. Thank you.
Anna, you can start when the sergeant calls time. Time has begun.
Hi, Jane. Thanks for having this hearing. My name is Anna Sax. I am the Legislative Chair of Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board. I'm testifying as an individual, though. I wanted to talk about my experience when I was at Think Zero, which is a waste reduction and diversion consulting firm. We worked with a number of office buildings in Manhattan. And what we found, this was before COVID, and it also occurred after COVID, was that our clients were paying for trash, recyclables, and organics collection, but oftentimes, they were receiving one truck from the hauler, meaning that even if the building was perfectly recycling and perfectly separating its organics, it would all get commingled in that one truck. And it would all go to a landfill or an incinerator. This was -- when we reported this to the hauler, they would, you know, say that they didn't know that this was happening and fix it, but it was very common as a way of cutting costs and as a way of, if they're their only organics. costs and as a way of, if they're their only organics on that route, it didn't make sense for them to send one special organic truck to pick up from that one location. And so I really look forward to the commercial waste zones where you have that volume on that route, and then it makes sense for the haulers to send a specific truck for the organics collection, for example. I wanted to also mention that, yeah, some of the buildings we worked at, they had three separate haulers coming to that one loading dock each night, especially in Midtown, and theoretically this would mean six trucks if each of those haulers was sending one truck for trash and one truck for recyclables, as they were supposed to. So there are a lot of inefficiencies, as we know, and I look forward to finally the implementation of the commercial waste zones to fix this. One thing I wanted to mention is for the enforcement, I would love to see something similar to the commercial loitering law, wherein if someone finds, is able to document a violation where the commercial hauler mixes the trash and the recyclables. I'll just finish this quick. And organics together, if you could share the reward. So right now, if you submit that to BIC, you get, they, they are able to issue a thousand-dollar violation, but you receive no reward. So when I did that in 2019, I think I was one of 10 citizen reports like that. So if the citizen were to receive some of that reward, you would see more eyes watching the commercial waste vehicles and more reports and more, a disincentive for commercial waste haulers to cut corners. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, thank you for everyone. Just now that we're on the Zoom space, encouraging everyone to stick to the time and submit written testimony if you're going to be going longer. Thank you so much. Appreciate everyone being here. Not directed at anyone, just in general, because I know we have a lot of people signed up. Thank you.
Rhonda, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Time has begun.
Hi, thank you Chairs Nurse and Menon, and to the committees for this opportunity for all of us to speak, and thank you all for all of your important questions this morning. Your careful attention to details and transparency in the interest of changing solid waste management norms so that we can not only lower our garbage footprint, but equally important, redress environmental, social, and economic injustices is, is noted and appreciated. From what we've seen today, this is clearly not an easy process, but I applaud everyone for your robust participation in doing what's right in this transition toward justice. My name is Rhonda Kaiser. I'm the Education Director for Cafeteria Culture. In addition, I serve as Chair of the Legislative Committee in the Brooklyn Solid Waste Advisory Board, and I'm on the boards of New York State Children's Environmental Health Centers and Sure We Can. My comments today are as an executive board member of Sure We Can. Sure We Can's, it's New York City's not only, only nonprofit bottle and can redemption center, and we thank the council today for supporting Senator May's bigger, better bottle bill, S237. The specific state legislation will expand the current ineffective bottle redemption law so that we can continue to reduce litter on our streets and recover these valuable resources. Our canners, or people who redeem bottles and cans for a living, are often marginalized and their work is often not recognized. So support for this expansion of this bill is support, is support for our often excluded waste management workers. I want to underscore what's already been stated today, that our community of canners clean our streets and harvest our resources at no expense to the city and divert around 500 tons of waste in this exclusive, inclusive, and low-barrier method of resource diversion. The almost 70% return rate of bottles and cans reveals the effectiveness of the inclusive bottle law compared to the less than 15% diversion rate of other single-use containers. It's important to stress that this high resource recovery rate is achieved at no cost to the city. And finally, this important update will not only increase the already-high diversion rate for materials covered under this law, it will.
Time has expired.
And, and give our canners dignity. Thank you.
Kathleen, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Time has begun.
Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon. My name's Kathleen Riley. I'm with the New York State Restaurant Association, and we're here today primarily to discuss the transition to commercial waste zones and the impact this change will have on the restaurant community. To set a little context, we wanted to share some survey data that we got from restaurant operators in December 2022. In response to elevated costs, restaurants have taken the following strategies. 86% have increased menu prices, 66% changed the food and beverage items offered on the menu, 59% reduced their hours of operation on days they stayed open, 46% closed on days they would normally be open, 38% say they postponed plans for expansion, 43% cut staffing levels. Expectations of 2023 profitability, the majority do not expect their profitability to improve in 2023, 47% think they will be less profitable, 32% think it will be about the same, and only 21% thinks they will be more profitable than in 2022. So in this challenging context, we are appreciative that the Department of Sanitation has been thoughtful about the immediate and lingering impacts of COVID-19 on the readiness of small businesses to transition to the commercial waste zone system. As this transition process picks back up again and continues in earnest, we want to reiterate that cost and quality of commercial waste services are the two biggest factors for our membership, and to that end, we urge the department to permit the maximum allowable number of carters per zone to encourage competition and prevent a deterioration of services. It also gives operators the opportunity to choose or switch carters as they see fit. We urge the department to strongly prioritize cost as it evaluates proposals, and it was encouraging to hear that the commissioner has already made that switch. Restaurants have already faced cost increases in so many areas, and soaring commercial waste expenses would be detrimental to our industry if they came to be. Of course, robust education and outreach will be critical in helping restaurant operators understand what they can expect from this new system. Finally, I'd also like to take a moment to ask the council to.
Time has expired.
Okay.
Elizabeth Balkin, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Time has begun.
Thank you. Hello, Chairs Menon and Nurse, and team members of the Sanitation and Small Business Committees. Thank you for your leadership and hard work and for permitting me to speak today. My name is Elizabeth Balkin and I'm the North America Director for Reloop, an international nonprofit organization that works to advance policies to catalyze a circular economy. I'm also a former city employee. Between 2014 and 2018, I served as Director of Policy and Senior Advisor to then Commissioner of Sanitation, Catherine Garcia, on some of the earliest efforts related to commercial waste zoning and organics. I'm here to express the critical need for Bill S237 and ask to amend the bottle bill. With the appropriate changes, this measure will deliver considerable benefits to New York City. In many jurisdictions outside the U.S., the deposit return systems, what we know as bottle bills, routinely achieve 90% or higher redemption rates. We researched high-performing systems all over the world and found that they have common elements, which we've identified on our website. We have also identified pragmatic tools to implement reform equitably and efficiently. Last year, we released analysis on how to do this in the Northeast, in particular looking at the benefits to New Yorkers. As my time is limited today, I'll submit written testimony that details these elements and what we recommend S237 change to be as effective as possible. But program scope is one of the foremost prerequisites. Bill S237 gets it right by calling for the inclusion of broader, a much broader scope of beverages. Wine and spirits typically sold in glass are particularly critical to be included for New York City food establishments. At present, these establishments, mostly small locally-owned businesses, struggle to deal with their empty glass bottles. Haulers will often not take this material with single-stream recycling collection, as we just heard, as both heavy and a source of contamination for paper and other valuable recyclables. Consequently, it ends up with the refuse or at times is left behind altogether. When glass is crushed separately, the quality is maintained. Okay, thank you. Just including glass in the bottle bill amendment is not a low, is not enough on its own, and I just want to recommend to the, to the council that in your resolution, a recommendation that distributors are actually coming to take back the empty containers. Right now, New York City businesses are forfeiting between $55 and $60 million per year in bottle bill deposits, deposits which they cannot get refunded. And that's a distortion in the system that we hope that this bill can address. Thank you so much for your time.
Elizabeth Adams, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Time has begun.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Elizabeth Adams, Senior Director for Advocacy and Organizing at Transportation Alternatives. Thank you to Chair Nurse and the members of the committee for convening today's hearing on commercial waste zones. At Transportation Alternatives, we believe that our streets belong to the people of New York, and we work with New Yorkers in every borough to build a future that rises to the needs of our communities. We need immediate and full implementation of commercial waste zones. The slow rollout for commercial waste zones program has led to dangerous crowded and polluted streets, and we cannot afford further delay. The initial law passed nearly four years ago now, in 2019, and the list of selected carters has still not been announced. Crashes involving larger and heavier vehicles are more deadly. These trucks weigh several tons and travel all over the city over the course of just one shift, working long hours with little protection, creating opportunities for crashes that kill and severely harm pedestrians, cyclists, and other road users. According to the city's 2019 study, private sanitation trucks claimed the lives of 43 New Yorkers since 2010, people who should still be here today. Full implementation will reduce commercial waste truck traffic by 50%, as people have noted before, representing millions of unnecessary truck miles traveled. The changes to this law, the new implementation, also increases the safety of New York streets through shorter routes that help workers do their jobs safely and effectively. In other cities that have launched waste zones, like Seattle, LA, and San Francisco, commercial companies have only a third of the crashes per driver compared to New York's numbers. We strongly support Intro 933, which will launch a working group to study, evaluate, and make policy recommendations regarding commercial waste zones. We hope that this working group ensures the equitable, safe, and successful implementation of commercial waste zones, and we recommend that the working group incorporate the following into its work, that it prioritize and incentivize safety standards.
Time has expired.
Include crash data for private sanitation companies, and set a goal of the reduction of vehicles mile traveled citywide in each zone. Thank you so much for the time today.
Jane, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Time has begun.
My name is Jane Selden, and I co-chair the working group Waste Not at 350 NYC. As a climate activist group, 350 NYC recognizes that the world can't achieve its greenhouse emission reduction goals without directly addressing the cradle-to-grave environmental impact of single-use plastic. If plastics were a country, it would be the fifth-largest emitter of greenhouse gas in the world. The sourcing, production, and disposal of plastic waste also has a disproportionate impact on the health of low-income communities and communities of color who live near fracking sites, petrochemical plants, waste transfer stations, landfill, and incinerators. We urgently need legislation that holds the companies that produce plastic financially responsible for the waste they produce. For this reason, Waste Not has been advocating for the new improved bottle bill and welcomes and supports New York City Council Resolution 167. The bottle bill has been a proven success as it has incentivized recycling and reduced road litter by 70%. However, it's time for the bill passed back in 1982 to be modernized. The new improved bottle bill expands the types of containers to include most non-carbonated beverages and increases the deposit fee from five cents to 10 cents. We've seen that in states where there's a higher fee, there's significantly higher rate of return. In New York, the return rate is 64%. In Michigan, which has a 10-cent fee, it's an impressive 89%. The bill also reduces greenhouse gas emissions by enabling more closed-loop recycling of aluminum glass and PET plastic containers. This is because the containers are returned to stores and redemption centers, there's less contamination, especially from broken glass, than when containers are deposited in curbside bins. Creating products from recycled material reduces greenhouse gas emissions because significantly less energy is required than producing the convergent material. The bill would also reduce litter that is an all-too-common sight in New York City streets.
Time has expired.
I'm sorry. This street trash is more than just an annoying eyesore. It clogs our drainage system, exacerbating the dangerous flooding we've witnessed on our streets and in our subways. Finally, this legislation will also directly benefit the thousands of canners in New York City who supplement their income by collecting empty containers and redeeming them. Forty years after the original bill passed, at a time when the minimum rate was 3.35 an hour, they are still being paid the same redemption fee. These canners provide an important service to New York City and deserve a raise. Thank you, and I'm sorry I went over time.
It's okay. Thank you. You actually closed us out for our testimony. I thought we had a lot more on there. Just want to thank everyone who was patiently waiting online for your testimony. I'm sorry we were shorter. Normally, we let folks go on a little bit longer, but I was, I was, I thought we had a longer list, so I was a little bit worried. But just want to thank everyone who participated today for the record and to my co-chair, Council Member Menon, for all her effort on this hearing, and we will conclude the hearing for today. Thank you, and thank you tech staff and everybody here.